I have a packed agenda tonight. Thank you, everybody, for being here. It's great seeing everyone. And I hope everybody got a chance to at least step outside in the sunshine for a couple minutes today. Oh, oh, okay, all right. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I spent a little bit more time in there, maybe, for both of us today, then? I don't know. We'll go with that. But thank, thank you, everybody. I certainly don't want to keep this long, but I just wanted to say that I'm honored to serve in this capacity this upcoming year and have had a chance to meet with Jim Barnes, our Chief Financial Officer, and kind of walk through what, what our process will look like. But I, I'm excited to hear from him tonight and as he shares more about the budget process, which recently started last week. And he's going to explain a little bit more about our transparent process this year that we're committed to, as well as what's going on with ARPASER, the financial cliff, and how that compares with lower enrollments as well. So I'm not going to steal thunder, but I am going to hand it over to Madam Superintendent for her opening.
Thank you so much, Chairwoman McKeckin, and welcome to this position. And thank you, former Chairwoman Woods, for what, you know, your time that you served. This is a huge position, which I know our board president, you know, is aware of, because there's, you know, very, not many other things that the board and myself, you know, are engaged in that are as important as making sure that we pass a budget that is equitable, that is fair, that demonstrates what our priorities are. And so we are in a time where things are very, very, very delicate. You know, when you are talking about services for children and, you know, jobs for people, it becomes, you know, really sensitive. And anybody that knows me knows that that's the kind of superintendent that I am, that I will, this will be a process that will continue to be transparent, it will continue to be inclusive, it is delicate, and we will continue to be strategic. So I know that we have our Chief Financial Officer, who is going to walk us through a presentation, but I wanted us to start out tonight by hearing from some folks that are very close to the schools, because they have been working with all of our principals. And so I have asked our Chief Associate of School Leadership, Ms. Jezonowski, if she could spend a couple of minutes talking about what this process, what she's been experiencing with the principals. I believe also in Room 801 is Associate Karen Murray and Associate Tanika Cedric, in case there are specific questions that you may have for them. And then, very briefly, because we also, as we're going through this process and we're thinking about staff, we know that we've got lots of facilities that also have a lot of needs, and we cannot be oblivious to those. And so I've asked Chief Hills to also just share a few words. And the whole purpose of all of this, that I want the board to see, is that this is an inclusive process. And I didn't want Chief Barnes to have to just, you know, on his own, make it appear that decisions are being made, you know, in isolation with just him. It is a team. It is a team centrally. It is a team that is including the voice of our principals. So I'll turn things over to Chief Jezonowski to just share a few words and then ask that she be followed by Chief Hills and then followed by Chief Barnes. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Good evening, board members and Dr. Williams. I would just like to share how the Associates of School Leadership are supporting the administrators throughout the school-based budget process. Since building leaders received their school-based budget books on January 30th, the Associates of School Leadership have supported administrators in the following way. We've held an informational session regarding budgets for all building leaders on January 31st, which included presentations from Maria Woods, Wood, and representatives from the Office of Curriculum, Assessment, and Instruction. We had approximately 72 administrators attend the session. They also, our team also answered questions posed by any administrator. With those questions, we've created a Frequently Asked Questions document that was also shared with all building leaders, and we update that regularly as more questions come to us. New administrators have been invited to sign up for an individual pre-budget meeting with the Office of School Leadership to review their budgets. The Office of School Leadership and Associates of School Leadership are holding pre-budget meetings to support schools. They have begun on February 2nd, and they will continue through the month of February. I've asked all the Associates of School Leadership to meet with each one of their principals individually and to go through their budgets and to work through that budget process. We will continue to provide guidance and support to building leaders as we go through this process through the next, through, up until March 8th, when they are submitted to our office. I will now turn it over to David Hills.
Thank you, Chief Jezonowski.
You're welcome.
Good evening, Chairperson McKeckin and board members. I hope you're well tonight. So the Operations Office, particularly when it comes to facilities and plants, has been working very closely with the Chief Finance, Financial Officer to really look strategically at a couple of areas where we can find efficiencies and create creative solutions. One is looking at our contracts, existing for service contracts, and making sure that those contracts are favorable to the district, and that if there are elements that aren't being fulfilled by in those contracts or elements we can do ourselves, we are, we are using our labor pool to see if we can find savings there. Additionally, we are looking at doing blitzes at schools where we take all the open work orders and we visit a school. We just started a waterfront, and we're doing two schools a week under Assistant Superintendent Luceria plants. And we are, we are taking all of our shop coordinators to schools and looking at all the open work orders. So instead of doing haphazard, we can put some more efficiency in place. So we're working to make sure that we are able to use our existing workforce to solve some of our facilities issues, instead of having them all owing into higher cost issues. And those conversations with the CFO are happening regularly about how we can strategically use our finances. And finally, we are working very tightly with the Chief Financial Officer and with State Aid to maximize reimbursement for any, any facilities efforts we have. And that includes efforts to have FEMA reimburse us for costs related to the lizard last year.
Okay. Thank you, Chief Hills.
Should I start up?
Yes.
Thank you, Superintendent. Thanks, David, and thanks, Darlene. I appreciate it. So tonight, we're going to give our second update on the 24-25 budget process. We always start out with this, next slide. Ed, we always start out with this first slide, reinforcing the three goals for the Superintendent. Superintendent, would you like to add anything to this slide?
No, I think it is self-explanatory, just saying that these are the priorities, that, you know, everything that we are involved in is with the focus on student outcomes and improving student outcomes. And so even during a time where we are experiencing, you know, budget challenges, we still have to stay focused on the outcomes that we share, we would meet. And, you know, these three outcomes, again, we call them the 999s because of the 39% that we will hit for our third graders on our end-of-the-year dibbles, who are economically disadvantaged, our 15.9% of disadvantaged students for mathematics that we will hit, as is measured by the end-of-the-year I-ready assessment, and the one that I think, you know, we're all working really, really hard to meet is the 79.1% of our graduation rate, the unofficial graduation rate by this June. So even though we are experiencing some challenges, you know, every question that I'm asking always comes back to, you know, how will this impact student outcomes and meeting these goals?
Thank you. Ed, move on to the next slide, please. So just briefly, an introduction and the objectives that we hope to accomplish tonight. Just some background, or last-minute news, it was very, I had a very nice meeting with the new Finance Chairman, Cindy McKeckin. I think the meeting went well and covered the basics. I would like to say hello to Mrs. Woods, my old pal on the Finance Chair. And we also went to Albany last week to testify in front of the Legislative regarding the Governor's Budget. We were with the other Big Five schools. One of my takeaways there was, two of my takeaways, the Legislature overall just was not pleased with the Governor's Budget in many ways, and the fact that we are in much better position to handle the challenges of next year than our Big Four partners. So they're all facing the exact same issues to varying degrees, but we are in a better position to handle these. So this is the second update provided on the 24-25 budget process. The official budget process just started last week. The process so far has been completely transparent. Most of the information that's shared tonight has been previously communicated, per the Superintendent, to the Board, Cabinet, the school-based leadership teams, department heads, BCS staff, and even externally to the state, the Order, or the BFA. We view all of them as our partners in this. It's going to be a difficult budget year. All of us must, must approach the 24-25 budget process with a new mindset that incorporates and explicitly acknowledges the economic realities of the loss of $90 million in out funding, the fact that large increases in state aid are over, and also the impact that lower enrollments are having on our district on both the revenue side and a need to align our staffing and costs for those lower counts. All of our budget decisions are data-driven. I want to take a quick second and just elaborate for a minute. We've been preparing for the budget process and the financial challenges of the next year for two months. Myself and the Superintendent have been meeting regularly on it. And out of those conversations, they've been extremely helpful for myself and the Finance Team. While we deal in tens of thousands of data points, her understanding of the children, the schools, and the community has really added a focus to our efforts, and I think the proper tone in addressing some very difficult times. A couple of her phrases are, you know, "bring down the temperature," and "we're after efficiencies." We need to face the realities that I just outlined and provide the same level of services more efficiently. So to be successful next year, we're going to need some financial surgery, and there is no promise that there won't be some pain in this process, but we simply don't know what that is yet. We're way too early in the budget process, and we're doing everything we can to alleviate it. The objectives for tonight, I'm going to give you the current status of the 24-25 budget process and the timeline for completion. I'll include in that an update on our efforts to cut $90 million in ARPASER costs. I'm going to give you an update on the Governor of State Aid budget proposal. There's been a lot in the news there. Some of it applies to Buffalo and some doesn't. I'm going to talk about the Level 1 budget projection, an essential benchmark and kickoff point for a budget process. I'm going to talk again about the financial consequences if no action is taken to address those economic and enrollment issues that I spoke about earlier. And we're going to end with, we are in a better position to handle this than most districts. We have options available to us and a specific plan to address these financial challenges. Ed, next slide, please. So current status of the budget process. It just started last week. Regarding the ARPASER cuts, if you remember, we had $60 million in non-staff expenditures and $30 million in FTE-related salaries and benefits. Regarding the non-staff cuts, we have successfully cut $42 million in non-staff expenditures, including proposed reductions in our after-school and summer school program costs for next year. So great job, Cabinet. However, this leaves approximately $18 million that will be, at this point, carried forward into the 24-25 budget. Regarding the FTEs, the approximately 300, 340 FTEs and the $30 million in costs that are funded through DC24, that's ARPASER, is a very delicate issue, and it's in the process of being addressed. Our plan to mitigate or avoid layoffs is a hiring freeze, except for essential positions, cutting vacancies from the general and grant funds, no unbudgeted request in the school-based budget process based upon enrollment decreases, and selectively filling retirements at the end of the year. We are better positioned than we have at other districts, and we have a specific plan. Regarding the department budgets, the Superintendent's kickoff memo and budget packet was distributed to all staff administrators last week. Outlined in the Superintendent's memo is that we're asking for departments' non-staff budgets to remain flat, with the exception of those costs that we added back from ARPASER. Trainings, the first training session was today. There's another one next Wednesday. I think there were three today. The due date, and these are important, because when you start getting real reports, the due date for Level 2 budget entry is March 15th. The Superintendent's bi-weekly budget updates and notices that went out to staff, I'm trying to remember what it is, yesterday, and I think it set the tone perfectly. It was a great kickoff item and message. Now, where we are in the school-based budget process. School-based budget books were distributed last week. Based upon the decrease in enrollments, you know, remember those realities that I talked about earlier, we're going to have to face them. So based upon decrease in enrollments, pre-K through 8th grade classrooms were reduced by 34, that included five bilingual. This was a necessary adjustment based upon decrease in enrollments. This is important, I think. After this classroom reduction, the district average pre-K through 8th class size is 21, not the 30 or 40 that I've seen in other reports or that's been kicked around. It's 21. No school will have an average classroom size of over 25. From the finance side of things, we always look at both sides of the ledger and how prior decisions are impacting current and future operations. Regarding that change in class size, just 18 months ago, 20 months ago, the district signed a $260 million contract with the DTI. It raised their average salaries from $70,000 to $90,000 a year. Very well deserved. Everyone was behind it. But all we're asking is to teach an average class size of 21, no more than that. The school-based budget books, they're due back from the schools to the OSLs on March 11th. They'll be reviewed by Dr. Williams. Then the final school-based budget approval meetings, they're scheduled for March 19th to the 27th, and Dr. Williams will receive an update daily of any staffing changes before anything is finalized. One other thing on the class sizes, I don't want to beat this over head, but we've had no grievances for overages this year. Last year, very, very, very minimal, so there's no history of teaching large classrooms, and the changes in the school-based budget will ensure that continues. Ed, next slide. I distributed this budget calendar again. I'll just point up a few dates on it. It's hard to read. But what I want to stress here is the budget process does just started, and it's a four-month process. We're a very large, very complicated financial and operational organization. It's about typical for getting the budget done and approved by the Board and May. So we don't have a lot of your answers right now, but as the department budgets come in and the school-based budget comes in, and they're all melded together, you'll start receiving reports. One thing to note here, it's got, it's a white line to be determined, 3/28. That is when we'll get the final state budget. We won't even know our actual revenues from our largest revenue source till the end of And then you see at the end, we'll have plenty of presentations, discussions of the data internaling before they're presented to the Board, and we hope to have everything approved at the March 15, uh, May 15th meeting. Ed, next slide, please. There's been a lot of talk in newspaper articles and news articles about the Governor's Budget Proposal. Here's exactly what it means for Buffalo. The blue column is what we're expecting to get this year. Two numbers I want to pick out there. The top one, Foundation Aid, $688 million, and the bottom one, total state aid of $913 million. The yellow column is the state aid runs based upon the Governor's Budget Proposal. Foundation Aid of $707 million and total aid of $937 million. The column to the right of the yellow column is the change from the Governor's proposed budget to what we expect to receive this year. About a 2.7% increase in Foundation Aid, and then you go down to the bottom, about a $24 million and 2.6% increase overall. I just wanted to put it out there, that's what's in the Governor's Budget Proposal. The Legislature will now start negotiating with the Governor on any changes. This yellow number, that number in the yellow column, that is the revenue number that we put into our Level 1 budget, which I'll speak more about in the following slides. Ed, next slide, please. In all my conversations with the Superintendent, we sure have boiled this huge amount of issues. Got a couple of questions. One, are we going to recognize and deal with the economic realities and the drop in enrollments, loss of ARPASER, or are we going to do nothing? If we do nothing, that's what this slide shows. It's called our Level 1 budget. So we've all known about the financial cliff for three years. Failure to decrease the expenditures and reduce our total budgeted FTE will lead to unsustainable budget deficits, a dramatic decrease in fund balance within 24 months, and we cancel all of our capital projects. Now, I keep showing this projection to emphasize what happens if we do nothing. It's not an option. But we have options available to us in our current situation, and we've actually even developed a specific plan to avoid what this chart shows from occurring. Again, I'm being a little repetitive, but I think it's so important that we all embrace this. We have to approach next year's budget process with a new mindset, incorporating the economic realities and the lower enrollments that impact all districts. And as the Super says, we can provide the same level of services, just more efficiently. Ed, next slide, please. So let me tell you what the Level 1 budget is. It's the worst-case scenario. It's the do-nothing scenario. The Level 1 budget projection, it's a critical benchmark during the annual budget process. It shows the financial impact of taking no action toward the ARPASER financial cliff or our enrollment decreases. The Level 1 budget right now shows a deficit of $101 million and a reduction in our general fund reserves from $360 to $249 million. It would jeopardize, if not just cancel out, any previously approved capital projects. It's a worst-case scenario, and while I'm going into detail on what the Level 1 budget is, some of you have asked about seeing Level 1 reports. I didn't want to get them on until you clearly understood what the basis and the assumptions behind this Level 1 budget. So the Level 1 budget includes the Governor's proposed state aid, which you saw, all current general fund budgeted staff with contract step and longevity increases, including vacancies, all current ARPASER-funded staff with the contract step and longevity increases. You're just taking 300 ARPASER FTEs, their salaries, their benefits, bumping them up for contract and benefit increases, and moving them into the general fund. It assumes no cuts in vacancies, no projection for retirement savings, and it includes a sort of operating-as-normal approval of all unbudgeted requests during the school-based budget process, which have averaged between 1 and 200 every year in the last three years. It includes increased benefits based upon the increased cost of services, we're estimating those to go up 4%, and then you add in the cost for the 314 ARPASER FTEs. Another thing, again, this district is large, complicated, many moving pieces, we're going to get hit with a $15 million increase in child tuition next year, $10 million, 10 to 11 million of which is based upon a new formula for calculating spent tuition. It's very detrimental to districts like us. It came out of the border regions, and it's most likely going to be approved. So our responsibility during the budget process is to reduce that Level 1 deficit, and we have a plan for doing it. That's what we're going to talk about for the remainder. Ed, next slide, please. Now, from Larry Scott and others, I'm going to get a lot of boos that I'm showing these charts again, but it clearly, this and the next chart I'm going to show you, clearly shows the inefficiencies that we have built into our system compared to our enrollments. The first chart, simply, you see this 100 times, the blue line is the enrollments, gone down from 31,000 to 27,000. This is happening across New York State. And the red, the red line is our budgeted FTEs. It's gone from 5,300 to 5,700. This is both our biggest challenge and problem, but it also can help illustrate our plan to get out of this and avoid layoffs, if we can implement it successfully. The red line includes about 300 vacancies. But until those vacancies are cut, it sops up budget resources, 30 to 50 million dollars, because the last thing you want in your financial guide is to not include vacancies. What if somebody just kept hiring people and that's not in your budget? It's the worst thing that could happen. So until those vacancies are cut, they sop up 30 to 50 million dollars in that resources. But if we cut them, we get that much money to play with, to cover ARPASER FTEs, which can't have both. The next page, Ed, please. These are our total actual FTE counts. You see the gray line? They've gone up 300. We've hired and put in place 300 additional staff resources in just 12 months. I say kudos to our HR team. 300 people are on our payroll. It's about $30 million a year in payroll and benefits. So we do have 300 more staff serving those lower enrollments. And again, it shows the difference between the gray line and the other two lines. Vacancies. We're up 300. Our plan calls for cutting the vacancies. Ed, next slide, please. Ed, next slide, please. Starting to think everywhere at this point is stopping listening to me. Starting to think everyone at this point is stopping to listen in to me. So I'll reiterate, reiterate again, a plan to reduce the level one deficit and avoid layoffs. Another thing that comes through in conversations with the superintendent, every decision she makes, she considers the personal element above and beyond everything else. So layoffs may not be able to be avoided. If we don't implement our plan, if we don't buy into those economic realities, then you probably have to lay people off. But we do have a plan that if implemented successfully, we can avoid it. We have to cut about 340 budgeted FTEs from the level one budget. Our plan to do this and avoid layoffs is outlined below. A hiring phrase. You can't be hiring people when you're talking about layoffs. There are hirings still except for, for essential positions, but only with the superintendent's approval. It was implemented about four weeks ago. Job postings will continue to be revised and are eliminated, and large scale recruitment events will not be occurring. Let's just sort of set the expectations everyone. Second, I cut vacancies. Superintendent has directed HR and finance to analyze those 300 or so current vacancies in the general and grant funds, and to consider cutting them from the budgets wherever possible to enable art professor funded staff, when possible, to replace those in the 24, 25 budget. We'll be adding an extra level of security of control, all to avoid a financial disaster. If we identify those vacancy cuts, we're 90% there, but we will not allow unbudgeted requests after the fact to simply add them back in. The 24, 25 school-based budget process began, it's data-driven, based on enrollments, and it does include special needs, high means, all those are factored in to those formulas. And the higher need schools get more resources. The 24, 25 seat projections call for 34 less classrooms, but the car ends up with a class size of average class size across the district of 21. There will not be a funding column for art professor because those funds are gone. No unbudgeted requests will be approved at this time. We need to see the type of job we're doing on a school leadership basis, on a cabinet level basis, on a finance level basis. If we're buying into the economic realities of the situation and the lower enrollments, given in our best efforts, we just need to get through that process. So no unbudgeted requests at this time. We're having classrooms in there. I am going to touch on this again because it's what financial people do. They make decisions based on assumptions and mottos. After that's over, and if something's not right, you go back and check your assumptions. Where was I right? Where was I wrong? To improve your projections from the past. All of this is tied in in our mindset. The elimination of 34 classrooms. The whole affordability of the BTF contract was based upon a financial projection that included cutting 160 vacant teacher positions as the enrollment kept going down and it's our best or left. And it also included reducing teacher turnover by 50%. I've read that it's been disputed. No, that is an absolute fact. We knew this day was coming, and yet we signed the contract with the BTF, and it's well deserved. But it was based on these assumptions. So over the past, last past years, our retirements have averaged about 300 for all bargaining units. We can intelligently surgically just hire back a portion of them. It's another way to avoid layoffs. Edmer, next slide please. You'll all be happy to see that header, summary remarks. So all of us must approach the 24, 25 budget process with a new mindset incorporating the economic realities of the art financial cliff, the end of New York state aid increases in our lower enrollments. These, these things are impacting every school district. Our budget decisions must continue to be data-driven. The level one budget deficit of 105 million, it's an essential part of the budget process. That's where we start before we start implementing our plans and making decisions. So every time we cut a vacancy, every time we can plan and make a commitment to not hire back 100 requirements, that deficit keeps dropping. It's a squawk out. So there's much work to do to lower that level one deficit. One note, this goes to like finance people telling you what might happen and then we monitor. Say we're successful, and I think we're going to be. From a financial planning and cash flow perspective, there's no longer going to be any vacancy savings in future years. Every position, because we cut out the vacancies and moved over our best, it's going to be full. We are going to have to manage better than we have right now. And our cash flow is going to become tighter, manageable, but tighter. There will be no room for unbudgeted requests in coming years. Put it in the budget. No vacancy savings. You've got to manage with the resources that you requested. We all do. So we've been preparing for this time, and though it will not be without challenges, together we can work smart and collectively to ensure that the improvements we've made to student, student outcomes continue. We really can. It's all about just doing things more efficiently. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief Barnes. It was great to hear your very detailed summary. And this information, I think, is helpful. And I just want to, you know, if, if I may for a moment, just summarize a little bit of, of what, what Chief Barnes said. And in this, quite frankly, is not the first time we've heard it. It's not the first time we've heard Board Member Woods talk about this, or Chief Barnes mention it. This has been an ongoing conversation for such a long time. And I think one of the biggest things that you mentioned is that we've known about this for three years. Change is coming. It was on the horizon. We are aware that it is coming, and now it is here. Inevitably, we get to that point. And change is uncomfortable. It's hard, it's slow, and it is not something that any of us absolutely are thrilled to engage in, but it's here. And we have to have a solution. We saw the level one budget projections. Those are a little scary, and I sure hope that we're able to avoid that level one. But with that, we are asking that everybody be open to change. Be open to experiencing a little bit of discomfort as we go through this process. It is not meant to hurt anyone. And everything that I have heard and that I continue to hear is that we are asking for creativity. We are asking folks to be willing to pilot out new approaches and to look at their budgets. Really, truly look at them. And for the first time, to outwardly transparently say, we need to be more efficient. That we might have been a little bit bloated, or maybe we weren't necessarily connecting the dots with enrollments and our FTEs. And we're hearing the superintendent and we're hearing her team outwardly say, hey, we recognize this is not okay. We cannot keep doing this. And so we need to take a hard look at it. And in my conversations, and Chief Barnes, thank you for spending time with me and just giving me a little bit of a deeper dive kind of crash course. Y'all are really spending time to think about this and make sure that we come up with the best possible approach. And the reality of it is, there's going to be hiccups along the way, and there is going to be moments where we try something and maybe it didn't work out, and we have to recalibrate, and we have to shift. And so I just ask, you know, that everybody hear what Chief Barnes said. This is not going to be the last time we hear him present on this. And, you know, that we recognize that at the end of the day, we need to do better, we need to manage better. And the goal is to provide our students with every, everything that they need, and certainly not cut resources. And there are ways, but it will bring discomfort because there's change. So I'm off my soapbox and I'm going to open it up. If it looks like Larry, you raised your hand, so I'm going to just let you go for it.
All right. Thank you, Chairwoman McEckin. So I'll start easy and then get a little bit more difficult. First, Chief Barnes, thank you for the presentation. I need more understanding on the charter school aid and tuition. So one of your slides showed a decrease in aid from the state, and then you mentioned the $15 million increase related to special education. And, and maybe you can't give me all the ins and outs on that second part, the $15 million increase. But I, and I, I'm, I'm going to assume that many board members need an understanding for that, that significant increase that is imposed on us by the state.
Yes. I will do that, Larry. I'll make that a priority. Extend it.
Okay, so we, so that we can have an understanding. But do you, in regards to the decrease in aid, charter aid, how come that has happened?
I, I can't give you a very specific answer. Everything related to our relationships with the charter schools is not going our way. And sometimes even indecipherable when I make calls to the state. We made this point to the legislatures. It seems specific. They all, they all have problems with charters. The ones at Buffalo seem to be greater in every aspect. We do a, we get an audit from the New York State Comptroller's Office to charge them additional sped funds. We do it, we withhold it from their payments as was mentioned in the audit. Two, three years later, they started intercepting our state aid payments for a portion of those. New York state aid didn't even know it. It came out of the charter school office of New York State. We're disputing that. There's a variety of issues that touch on, how can your transitional aid go down in your aid run when all of your enrollments and other things are up? We're investigating all this stuff later.
So, so that $15 million increase is projected as a result of that audit that was done?
Well, no, that was an additional item, almost a nuisance item, Larry, but it shouldn't be happening. But they allow it to happen to us. 11 of their 15 million is due to a board of regents change in sped formula. We, we got with the big five. We objected during a hearing period. I just fully expected to be fully implemented. The heck with Buffalo and the other big five, so I put it in the budget.
Okay. Just one more thing, and then I'll ask my next question, and I'll get off my soapbox. But I know Ms. Board Member Woods knows this. These charters in Buffalo especially, they're sitting on millions of dollars. And our state legislators, if, if they're concerned about the budget and money that's being spent and how it's being spent, for once, they need to step up and do something about this. So I look forward to further conversation on this. It, it's just about being fair. And we know that there's charter schools that close and millions of dollars in assets go missing, public, public dollars. All right, moving on. So that we've hired 300 additional staff over the past 12 months. I know that you're working on giving us a sense of where that the additional positions have come from. You know, I want to, we're still looking for a breakdown on how many more administrators, how many more TOSSAs, coaches, mental health staff, reading, math, if we've hired more math teachers, security. I know we've hired many more security. And just kind of looking for some understanding on the school-based budget process. I know each school is different. Each school has different needs. I, I understand and accept that based on enrollment decline, we need to close some classrooms. That makes sense to me. However, we know that needs, although enrollment's decreasing, we know needs are not decreasing. They are still quite significant. So I, I don't know everything that's going out in those school-based budgets, but I'm hearing from people already that in those budgets, we're cutting reading teachers. And I assume that's fact, and I'm just trying to understand how these budgets are being sent out. I was under the understanding at one point that every building got a literacy coach. Now I'm hearing that everybody should be getting a reading teacher. What is the protocol? What's the standard going out in regards to in particular, reading teachers? Because that seems to be coming up right now.
Larry, you got that answer. It's not available right now for next year. The books were sent out the exact same way they've been the last three years, except for there's enrollment decreases at the schools. There's no art professor funding in those budget books. Other than that, it's pretty much the same thing, and they are based on needs. Now, I can't answer you right now for reading teachers. Our budget is extremely complex. They could be put in Title I next year. They could be put in another grant, or they could be put in, or the, the schools can buy them. I will get you that answer. Again, the process just started. But I'll get you an answer on reading teachers and also on the new hires.
But do, do we have, like, is it a standard for us to provide a literacy coach for every building? Or is that no longer the case? No longer? I see no.
Right. It has been in the past because we had the funding to support that. But as we're going through and looking at everything, we're looking at test scores. Many of our schools have made significant gains. We're looking at suspension rates. When we talk about social emotional needs of children, we're looking at the levels of E and L students that, that, you know, a school may have attendance rates to see how we can support, you know, in a different way, what the schools need. But this was just a first shot out. We knew that it would be a shock value for schools. But I would hesitate from us, you know, beginning to advocate for specific groups of anything because as soon as we say we're advocating for reading teachers, well, then you're going to get social workers, or you're going to get assistant principals, or you're going to get counselors. So I think we have to look at each school and see, you know, what the school really needs when we look at their data. And that's what the ASLs, that's what Chief Jazanowski was kind of sharing earlier. We met yesterday, and they were just sharing some out of the box, I heard Chairwoman McEckin say, we, we've got to start to think a little differently. It's going to be difficult because we've been in the process, we've been in the business of saying yes, because we had the resources to say yes to everything that school said that they needed. And so this is a time where we're not saying no, but we are saying if you want to have a literacy coach, and if your data supports that that's what you feel you need, that is fine. So help us understand where can we then trim somewhere else?
It's a good point, Chief.
All right. Thank you. I will be watching closely to see how this develops. I know, I know, I know we need to adjust. I, I, I get it. I hear, I hear that. I see it. But I will be watching closely how we do adjust. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Scott. Dr. Rivera?
Thank you very much, and thank you for the presentation as well as the dedication so far to not touch classrooms as much as possible. My question has to do with that, and it has to do with strategy. So we've heard some about your strategy, about kind of rightsizing and thinking about how all this will come together. Are there other areas in which you're looking as well that doesn't have to do necessarily with direct instruction? Actually, this is a two-part question. My first is just thinking a little bit more and asking a little bit more about considering renegotiating contracts, things like software, things like over, you know, over, sorry, I almost said overload, which is my world, not your world, overtime, as well as efficiencies in other places like that. But particularly with, with the work that you're doing to make sure that schools still get what they need. I know that I'd like to hear a little bit more about how you're assessing that, how fine range you're doing. Are you going at a building by building level, a classroom by classroom level, programmatic level? That would be helpful to me. So you have two in front of you. Tackle whichever one you're ready to do first.
I could tackle the first one, and the super told me to make sure I mentioned this, and I forgot it. Obviously, as part of our financial surgery, we are looking at all non-staff expenditures, starting with just keeping flat. We're looking at all central office staff, vacancies in existing positions. Third, we've embarked upon, and it's totally to give you the results, the most extensive internal audit program we've had in years and years. I know we found efficiencies there in, in terms of staffing and the impact of not following procedures and lost revenues or increased expenditures. We are looking at everything, I assure you. We are looking at everything, I assure you, and especially at the central office level extensively.
So as, as a board, are we going to get some of that information as we move along? As you're looking for some of these FTEs that we need to make sure that we cover or cut from the budget so we don't cut staff necessarily, classroom staff, instructional staff, coach staff, social workers, et cetera? And I'm sorry to anybody who I missed, anybody who's working with our students.
Absolutely. You know, we're looking right now a lot at overtime, professional development. We've been, you know, able to offer professional development at the 1-200th level, which was good. It was what was needed. You know, we know that even with our technology, we have had a number of, you know, laptops and iPads that we've had to replace, I mean, an exorbitant number. And so all of those things, you know, we've got to really take a look at. And those are things that will be easier, you know, easier to address. But we certainly are looking at central office. I'll be looking at every single one of those 343 positions. And we want to look at, you know, if we have to decrease, where we can decrease, where there will be least impact to our children. But, you know, I think if we look at the vacancy piece, you know, and we get that right, it will be, you know, very, very, very minimal. But we do have to, you know, I, you know, I have to keep going back to, we've got to trust the process. You know, this is a process that I don't recall in my time that, you know, I've ever had to experience a $90 million, you know, shortfall in a very short period of time. And so it's something that, you know, we've got to be very diligent about, very strategic about. So that's where I came up with bi-weekly informational notice to all of our staff. I want our staff to know and understand. I want to go to principal meetings. I want to hear from our principals. I want to hear, you know, at parent congress meetings from our parents. So, you know, I'm trying to be as inclusive as we can, but we know that we want to be fiscally, fiscally responsible also and have a budget ready to pass, you know, before the end of the school year so that folks know, you know, know where they stand.
Absolutely. So I, I hear that and I appreciate that. I think some one thing that I would love to hear more about either now or in the future, as we continue to talk about this, is the way in which we can use some of our assessment resources. You know, we have program assessors. We have assessors to see what, what our high-impact programs are. And I think looking in those places to see what's giving us the best leverage in terms of returns in education with our students would, I would love to hear more about that because that is a part of the strategy. We don't want to unintentionally take something away that's working. And we also don't want to fund something that looks like when we started it, it would work, but maybe didn't give us returns that are worthwhile.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rivera. I am not going to, which is a little bit different, call on everybody. So if you do have a question, President Kotman is all you.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Of course, my phone has been ringing off the hook about what's going on. And I guess from your perspective, because you're chief financial officer, you know, you keep emphasizing that the size or the student population has declined. However, we are in the process of doing effective school board governance. And the concern I have in regards to that is that the needs of the children have escalated and the learning has gone down. So it upsets me in my heart to hear that the classroom sizes will be limited to 21. And I know in some buildings, they're, they're, they're over what they're supposed to be now. Okay. So, or 25 or whatever. I have two, I have several questions. The maximum classroom size for the contract with the teachers is how much? How many students?
20, 30?
30.
30.
I thought it was 30. Okay. For our pre-K children, is it still 18? Yes. Okay. And for our K through, K through three, is that where you're talking about not making it more than 25?
Now, the district, the, the average classrooms at any school are not, no school has over 25.
So what happens when a classroom does have over 25 in a school? Because you're taking averages.
The teachers immediately file a grievance for an overage. There's been zero payments for overages so far this year and a very minimal amount last year, which would indicate to me it's not happening very often.
But they have to, it has to be over 30, right? Not 25?
Correct.
Right. Okay. Okay. I want to make sure that's clear because I'm watching these numbers. And I, and I have been on a board when we've had to tighten our belts. So you said that you saved 42, you saved a total of, I saw, I saw something that says something was it?
42.
42 million.
Right.
And then, and you said with the elimination of the vacancies, that's another 50 million, right? So isn't that the 90 million?
Yeah, 30 to 50. Yes.
Isn't that your 90 million?
Yes. Yeah, we're saying the same thing. Yes.
Okay. So help me understand.
We cut out 42 from the non-staff our president. Now we're looking at 30 million related to those FTEs. If you cut an equivalent amount of vacancies, retirements, no, no unbudgeted request in the school-based budget that just keeps adding to the total, yes, you'll get your 30.
Okay. So help me understand how most vacancies that were not filled was in our most needed schools. Help me understand that. We, we need a vacancy report. We've had the vacancy report. We need a vacancy report to see where they are. How does that impact not filling vacancies in the schools that are, that traditionally have vacancies? How does that impact them? How is that supposed to be fixed with this budget? Because I'm concerned about that.
I shouldn't, but I, I know. I'll speak to the superintendent. We're not just running roughshod over every vacancy and cutting, cutting, cutting. She needs, she has demanded to see a list of the vacancies proposed to be cut before they are cut. And she's, I know, highly attuned to situations like that.
I want to finish this. Okay. I want to finish what I'm trying to get you to answer for me. Okay. Okay. The money from the vacancies from last year are being used to do what?
Uh, went into our general fund reserves.
Okay.
Like any, like any young family.
Okay. So I'm concerned about the equity piece here. Okay. So these schools did not have what they budgeted for last year. That money has been taken from those kids and put into a general fund and is not used to empower the schools or the children. There seems to be a problem with this vacancy formula and how it's being exercised. So in other words, my school budgeted, and for whatever reason, they have seven vacancies. Those seven vacancies, let's say, just for the sake of saying, is $100,000. The children did not receive any education in that area for, for real. They had substitute teachers or whatever. Now, you're going to take the money that was not used, put it back in the general fund and not allow the schools to use the money. That doesn't sound fair. That's not equity.
So I guess I would have a few questions to look at a root cause on why the vacancies weren't filled. Because I know HR did a lot of work with recruitment and, you know, most of the schools, as they've requested things, we've been in a position to be able to grant. Whatever it is they say they need and they want, and HR posts, and we interview. You know, we can't force folks to accept positions, you know, if they choose not to. But I would want to do a root cause to see, you know, what the vacancies are, how long they were vacant, how they've been, you know, still addressing student needs with those vacancies. But ultimately to see what is the cause of a school having large numbers of vacancies?
And year after year after year after year after year after year after year. Seven years, no Spanish teacher. I want to know too. Okay. I want to know. So that's why I'm, I'm pointing this out because when you start talking about saving money, you know, we start talking, we start losing sight of what equity looks like in the equation oftentimes. And I want to make sure that we understand that. I feel that the hire and freeze should exist for all positions, and it should come before the board. And it should be before the board should approve any hiring, any hiring moving forward. If we're in the process of still hiring people, okay, and the, and we are in the process of talking about not hiring people, I want to, I feel that, and we did this before, it was in 215, where the board required all hiring to come before the board before it happened. That means before the position was filled, it had to be approved from the board. And the reason they did it then was because we were suffering financially. And what ultimately ended up happening is, is that they ended up, as a result of not hiring, quote, some key positions, people ended up, uh, job titles being expanded to cover some of the work, and they did not ultimately need to hire certain people. And so I'm just trying to figure out where we are with that because people said to me today, I got a call, a complaint saying, you know, Mrs. Kotman, there's supposed to be a hire and freeze, but I'm still seeing new positions being filled or positions being filled. Now, I don't know if that's true or not, but it's the perception of the staff that there's supposed to be a hire and freeze, but certain people are making it through. And so I want, I, I sort of feel that we need to put a double layer in there and make sure that any positions that are going to be hired moving forward in this environment, that it, that the board receives notification prior to the job. And I know you won't probably like that, but this happened in 215. And as a result of 215, jobs were, were meshed. They created new positions, and we ended up saving some money that year. But we did some crazy things that year, but we had a difference. So I want somebody, you guys to consider that. You know, it's something worth having a conversation about. And I have a problem every time I hear, we will not allow unbudgeted requests in this, in this budgeting process, when I know for a fact that if we look at the demographics and the data, it reflects that children are being sent to high school, not reading at a level, and that the high schoolers, the high schools need additional supports to support these children out the door. And I'm concerned about our goals of it being achieved. If we can use the data, I'd like to see the data. I'd like to see what happens. I'd like, and I like it desegregated. I, I, the data that we often get is, uh, data that it puts all categories together, all males, all females, all special ed. I'd like to see that data broken down to see if we're moving our targeted group. And I, I have a problem because the reason for unbudgeted requests, as I said before, was for equity. That's the reason for unbudgeted requests was, was the equity. It was, in other words, called an equity overlay is what it was originally sponsored as. Unbudgeted request was an equity overlay, which meant that there was more support that was needed. And so I had a talk with Darlene Jezonowski on Friday briefly, and I shared with her one other thing, and I'll conclude, that I feel that if, if these decisions are being made data-driven, then there ought to be a benchmark across the district, and everybody should be able to know what that, that those, that, that standard is. Okay. So how many special ed? What percentage? This, that, and the other. And so as I got involved into talking to this with a couple of principals, I found out that there were a lot of things that were not being done. For example, under special ed, okay, most 1211 children were struggling with math. However, if you put a certified math teacher in the classroom, the children excel rather than a special ed teacher. And so all things are not equal is what I'm being, what's being shared with me. The same is with a teacher assistance. Teacher assistants are in certain schools, but the schools with the greater needs don't have teacher assistants. They have teacher aides. So when we start looking at these things, when you look at the data for special ed, is it a high-need, high-need classroom in the buildings? What's going on? Or is it, is not? So when we start talking about data-driven, I'm just wondering, how far deep are you going into this data? Because when you talk to these principals, and they're having a meeting tonight, by the way, I heard, they're having a meeting tonight to go over the budget and their concerns about the budget. And so I, I, I'm just concerned that when we say data-driven and, and, and it's based on enrollment, okay, students have dropped down, that we're not digging deep enough. And finally, if we feel that we are not being treated right, call action in to the state for the charter situation. Why have we not moved that to the next level? That's my question. If we feel that we have been harmed by something that has been done by the Board of Regents, why have we not legally moved forward with action against it? That's my question. Because I'm just hearing about this.
So you've asked a lot of questions. The first one I want to say is about unbudgeted requests. And in the PowerPoint, what it says is just no unbudgeted requests will be approved at this time. So at this time, we're trying to catch our breath. You know, we just want to catch a breath. We just kicked it off. And we know that, you know, if we opened up unbudgeted requests, everybody, I mean, and I get it. I get it. But we have to, so when I say data-driven, as I share, yes, we are looking at enrollment, but we are also looking at student needs. And I was a principal, so I know we're looking at suspensions. We're looking holistically. We're looking at the social emotional needs. We're looking at, you know, the nursing needs. We're looking at scores. We're looking at all of it. So we're drilling all the way down. That's why, you know, as the superintendent, I'm going to be deeply involved in all of it. But I think, you know, we've got to let the team, we got to trust the process a little bit, and let the team, the associates of school leadership are working real closely with principals. And like I said, you know, I'm planning to go to the principal meeting, not to just talk at them, to hear from them. Because just like you all are fielding calls, I know every single principal very, very well in this district. Every single one, every assistant superintendent, every single supervisor and director. And believe me, my phone is blowing up too, you know, and everybody has a compelling reason why they have to keep what it is they want to keep. And all I want to be able to do is work with the associates and work with the team and see if there are a change of mindsets. Is there a way to still meet the needs of the children that's efficient? And maybe it will be, and maybe it won't. Maybe it will.
But the unbudgeted request never happened until after the budgets had been submitted. Okay. His first presentation a month ago said no unbudgeted requests would be entertained. So I'm glad to see that you've added at this time. However, they have never been done at this point. Unbudgeted requests have never been brought before the budget process at this point. It has always been brought after the budgets have been finalized and, and reviewed, that the superintendent gets to look at. And I hope that process remains in effect is what I'm concerned about. Because that is the equity overlay. The other thing they said is that the formulas that were in place in 1920, such as the special ed formula, there were different formulas that existed are no longer present. One of them they listed was the special ed formula, what determined who, what you would get. There was something about if you had certain classrooms, you got certain points. I'm certainly not familiar with it. I've never done a budget. They're saying it's not in this budget. Okay. So certain formulas were removed and not put back in. What I asked my board, what I asked my principals to do is to look at the 1920 budget and see if things have gone down or if they have received less than what they received in 1920. 2019, right? No, no, 19 to 19, 2019 to 2020 is what I'm saying. That was before COVID, and that was the year. One of my principals told me that things were supplanted, that he had budgeted things, but they were put in our eser. They were pulled out of his budget and put in the eser fund. So that's going to be interesting to see how all this rolls out. But I appreciate the job that you're doing. I know it's very difficult. I'm probably the only board member that's been on the board where there was a situation where you had to deal with balancing the budget, et cetera. So I'm very much aware. What I am concerned about is, is that the needs of these children have escalated. And I am concerned that the resources did not make it to the children, particularly from our CBOs. And I'm worried about that money going back. And I'm worried about that money going back into the general fund because typically the general fund ends up with easily fourteen million dollars every year for, for unbudgeted, uh, I mean, for unfilled vacancies. And so that's what my concern is that this year is might be twenty-four million. How would we know? But I just want to make sure that we are making sure that we get what we're supposed to get. It is not easy anymore. And you also need to keep in mind that some of our support systems are not, no longer there. Erie County has wiped up a lot, wrapped up a lot of our supports. They're, they're not providing the support they used to. We need to have a conversation with Erie County and we need to have a conversation with the city of Buffalo. Because if, if suspensions are important, certainly safety is important. And the board has asked for that conversation. Okay, so you know, pick the biggest elephant you got, suspensions. But yet, we need to be safe so that we can have a school running, so we can suspend kids. We need to work on safety with the common council and get this fixed because there is a problem with safety. Okay, I'll be happy to have that meeting, uh, uh, with the council at any day, anytime. Thank you. I appreciate what you're doing. I know it's difficult and I know it's not easy. But I do know that we need to make sure that our children, okay, are taking care inside of those buildings. And, and I'll be honest with you, I wasn't convinced prior to COVID and I'm certainly not convinced now that we figured out the total formula, how to make these children work. I would like to see some legal action process, uh, from our attorney in regards to what is going on with the charters, uh, charter and the payment. It is, uh, it's unconscionable that we're not on record if we are going to be harmed as a result of it.
We're not record with the state and the Board of Regents state, but just so you know that.
No, no, we're not on record, record legally. Saying legally is what I'm talking about. It's one thing to be in a meeting to have objections. It's a whole nother thing to put it on a legal form and submit it. And there should, and I think we had a period of time when that action was done and we may have lost that opportunity. I'm thinking there is a time limit and I don't know, I'm not an attorney, but somewhere in my mind, uh, attorney, uh, Mary, it comes up that we had an opportunity possibly to file Article seventy. In regards to an action that was done by a, a governing body that caused us harm. So we need to look into that. If we, whether we missed the opportunity or not, we still need to go on record officially saying that, uh, the harm, that it will hurt and it needs to come from our, uh, our legal as well as from our board. So thank you so much, but I appreciate the work you're doing. I know it's hard, but at the end of the day, it's hard out here in these buildings too. It's very hard in these buildings. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, President Kotman. Um, I know that we have a pretty packed agenda today. Um, I'm going to just stress, this is not the last time we'll be having a conversation and we are very early in the process. So, um, if my fellow board members that haven't spoken yet are willing to submit any additional questions, um, to Chief Barnes, the superintendent, um, it would be, I think, wonderful if we could, uh, thank everybody for their time and keep us moving.
Excuse me, Chairwoman, I just had a couple of questions, since we are in session.
I, so, uh, Board Member Heard, I appreciate that. I was hopeful that we might be able to, um, move us forward. And we can still submit questions, um, but we have taken a whole lot of time, if you are willing.
Uh, I, I just, just want to revert back to Roger Rules that, that, uh, we are in session for our finance and there's a couple of questions that, that have to be asked.
Well, if you have to ask them, then ask them.
I'm asking for the floor to answer a couple of questions.
I just had to ask them.
Okay, I can hear. Thank you. Thank you very much, Chairwoman. Um, just a couple of quick questions. Um, uh, I was looking at some of the data that we have here and how it's based and how it's laid out. And, um, you say that March eleventh, the students have to hand a report in for, um,
Yep, the report.
For their budget.
Yeah.
And March fifteenth, it's, the budget is due.
Uh, there's two parts to the budget. Under the department budget column, those are due back March fifteenth. The school-based budget books are to be returned to OSAL March eleventh. They, there are two sections of the overall budget process, each has their own timeframes.
Okay, and when will that report be getting back to the board to review?
Uh, I, I think I start reporting, I have a calendar on there, I start reporting out in April. You'll start seeing, like, full reports on what a budget would look like uh, based upon input received from the schools departments and the superintendent's, uh,
Okay, uh, thank you, thank you. I had information now. Um, a couple of quick questions, um, based upon, um, uh, I just want to narrow it down, uh, to what we're dealing with. Uh, we're talking about the cuts and we don't know exactly right now where we're at with the cuts and what's going to happen with that. So, well, we mentioned summer schools and programs. Where, where are we at with summer schools? Is that something that's projected is going to be cut? I have a number of teachers that, that responded about summer school and number of questions um, pertaining to summer school and, and the, the legal perception for our children.
Right. Jim, if I can just say, no decisions have been, have been solidified about summer school, but just like with everything else, we're looking at the community partners that we have so that we can still meet the needs of children. It's just that we may not be able to do all that we've done over the past three years because we had extra funds.
I'm just going to make it quick. What about our pre-K programs? I know we had some, uh, pre-K programs that rolled out with, with a partner. And are those jeopardized or in jeopardy at this time, or are we looking to suffice with those?
You mean the three Y program?
That's correct.
Okay, so right now, again, it's, it's going to be kind of the same answer with everything. There's nothing, um, definite that, you know, we just rolled it out this week. So right now, we're in the process where we rolled some things out to the buildings and then we'll sit down as a team, you know, with the voice of principals, with the voice of all, and start looking at school by school, really going deep and looking at schools, programs, classrooms, and all of that. So right now, this is just, you know, kind of a first, a first shout out. We just started the process about a week ago.
Okay, I just, I just, I'm going to be respectful to the board. I just wanted to ask those couple of questions, just to add in because, uh, we get a ton of calls based upon summer school and parents also, we talk about this deficit. And opposing the hire and freeze, um, how will we be able to, uh, move that to hire for summer school, um, teachings and also our, our summer programs if those are going to be initiated? So it's just a couple of things that we have. And also there's money from the city of Buffalo that owed to us that we talked about. And the legal should, we should always take a look at that as a board, legal to see what the city of Buffalo and get, get back our interest rates from our ESER funds, which can help support some of these programs, and also the money that's, that's in our shared accounts. So that's one thing I'm going to say, and thank you, Chairwoman, for allowing me to get those out. And hopefully we can come to some reasonable conclusions as we move forward.
Thank you, Board Member Heard. Um, if there is no other opposition, um, it is my hope that we will close out finance and ops for this evening. Um, all right, and, um, we will hand it over to Dr. Kathy Evans-Brown for Executive Affairs.
Thank you, Chairwoman Cindy. Um, good evening, everyone. Um, during the executive affairs, we will, um, hear from a charter. Um, is Dr. Ebony Bullock here?
Good evening.
Oh, she is, okay. Oh, you're in the, are you in City Hall?
I am.
Oh, okay, that's why I didn't see you. Okay. So we're going to be, um, talking about, uh, actually, this is a charter hearing that Dr. Bullock will be chairing. And Dr. Williams, do you want to introduce, um, Ebony for this facilitation?
Thank you so much, Chairwoman Dr. Kathy Evans-Brown. Um, I'd like to ask our chief of shared accountability, excuse me, uh, Chief Ebony Bullock, if she wouldn't mind introducing, I believe we have some representatives from the Buffalo Science Charter School that are with us that will be sharing a presentation this evening.
Yes. Good evening, Dr. Williams, um, admirable Chair Lady, Dr. Kathy Evans-Brown, um, and, uh, other board members that are both in present and virtually, and my colleagues in eight oh one. Um, we have Mr. Bullock here who is going to briefly present for you. Um, Buffalo Academy of Science Charter School has requested a modification to their original charter. It includes a merger. So this is not a renewal hearing, but when a charter school, uh, requests a modification, they must come forth, um, and have a public hearing. We are the LEAs who we host. And so he will come now and, um, for the public, uh, let them know about the modification he's requesting. And, um, then we will be shortly on our way. Ms. Bullock?
Thank you, everybody. Like, um, I will not be thinking much of your plan. First of all, I like, thank you and I appreciate all these dedicated people who are serving the kids across the Buffalo schools. So we are charter public, we are all together in this game. And actually, when I was listening to the previous session, um, the financial issues is everybody's issues. Um, and charters are really suffering financial issues also. Um, yeah, hopefully we can get more support from state altogether and, uh, we can serve our communities better. So today, um, the revision requests, uh, from Buffalo Academy of Science is nothing to do with our enrollment, with our great configuration, with our schools at all. So the schools stay same, there is nothing changed. Uh, but we do have another school in Rochester, Rochester Academy of Science. Um, we're just merging those two educational corporations. So there's no change in schools, no change in school grade configuration, no change in enrollment, um, no change in anything. But technically, um, we were two educational corporations, will be serving as one education corporation. Um, so under this merger, uh, the Buffalo Academy of Science, Buffalo Academy of Science Two, and Rochester Academy of Science will be merging under one education corporation. Um, again, uh, it is just, uh, ad corp structure is merging, nothing else is changing. There will be no, um, impact on budgets, no impact on enrollment, and no impact for grade configuration. I don't know if, um, there's any questions I can answer.
So, um, Dr. Kathy Evans-Brown, if there's any questions from the board, but to just summarize, if we were not, if we're not sure, there is no impact to enrollment to Buffalo Academy Science and Buffalo Academy Science Two, which are here locally. There is no impact to budget, there's no impact to grade configurations to the schools that are here locally. Essentially, all they're asking for or giving public notices is that they're requesting of their authorizer to be allowed to merge with Rochester Academy of Science in terms of their ad corp. There will be no impact locally. And so if there are any questions, um, we do not have anyone here from the public to offer comment or questions. Um, Adneer will let me know if there's anyone in the chat. I don't, I'm looking at the numbers. I don't believe there are anyone, if there is anyone in the chat. But I do open it up to our esteemed board if you have, um, a question or two from Mr. Bullock.
Okay, so I will, um, you know, look at who's asked the question. I know President Kotman has a question, but before that, so are you saying that you're just asking for a merger? Um, what's the, what's the purpose of the merger? That's what, that would be my question.
President, you, you ask process of merger?
What's the purpose?
Purpose of merger, okay. So, um, Buffalo Academy of Science and Rochester Academy of Science actually is, um, this, they run by the same, uh, group of executive and central office. Uh, we opened the Rochester Academy of Science under SUNY um, with the intention to move all our schools under SUNY authorization. But then, um, there was some, um, pushbacks in a sense, or some concerns from Board of Regents to move us to SUNY. Um, that's, that's why we decided to move all our charter schools under SED authorization. So, um, technically currently, Rochester Academy of Science is run by the same, um, central office as Buffalo Academy of Science. So, um, with this merger, we are moving from, and we, we're working with an MOU with, with these two, those two schools, we are moving all these schools under SED, under one ad corp. So we're running two ad corps, we'll be running one ad corp. But we're careful for running those two ad corps, so there's no change. It's just from MOU, we're going to, um, work with ad corp.
Okay, well, thank you for that. I still don't clearly understand, but thank you for the explanation. Uh, President Kotman, you have a question or a comment?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, thank you, Mr. Bullock. It's good to see you again. Thank you for the work that you do. Um, your question, uh, we had a similar question and, um, I'd like to extend that question. Is the purpose for this, um, by doing this merger, do you improve your balance sheet?
Uh, no.
Does this make you more, uh, stable as an organization for purchases, future purchases?
Uh, I would say no. But it, it increase our, it decrease our paperwork, in a sense. Currently, since we are working with an MOU, we do, um, uh, separate policies, separate paperwork, separate submission to the state, separate submission for annual reports. Everything is duplicated. So when we merge, finances, there's no change, operationally, there's no change. But it's going to reduce the paperwork that we're doing.
It reduces your paperwork, it also should, uh, position you financially in a better position to make acquisitions and to expand your footprint. So I just wanted that to be part of the record, uh, because that is the purpose for typically when people merge. You don't just ideally merge just to merge, there's a reason behind merging. There's a lot of paperwork that has to be filed to put those mergers in place. And I wanted that to be a part of the record, uh, that, uh, that, that is probably, uh, uh, sub, uh, important for your future plans as an organization, I'm sure. Thank you. I have no other questions.
One, one note on that. Um, this merger is both side by side of the same organization, there's not much impact. But, uh, as I was listening to the finance piece, um, I, I believe you already know that, like, um, charter schools are also really suffering from finance. And small charter schools will be suffering more coming days. And I would say, um, you may expect some mergers coming in because uh, small charter schools are really, really suffering financially. Um, there may be even closures coming up because, um, small charter schools are really suffering. And I don't know, like, that, that's, that, that's a financial hardship. But this merger is not for the financial hardship because this is not two separate charter school merger.
Chair Lady, if, if I, um, Board Member, uh, Terrence Heard has, has his hand up.
Okay.
Terrence, you're on, you're mute?
Uh, thank you, thank you again. Uh, just two quick questions. Um, with this merger, are you planning to extend your class sizes?
No.
Okay, for one. And the second, everything has pros and cons. Uh, you, you talked about some of the pros, what are the cons in this merger?
Um, I don't see any.
There's no cons, everything has pros and cons.
I don't think anything of.
Okay, thank you. I'll use the floor.
Because this is like, if it's a normal, two separate organization, two separate charter merger, there are a lot of cons because the cultural, um, fits or leadership reorganization or, um,
Yeah, I mean, I mean, say if the head, say if the head is in Rochester and you have specific issues going on at school here in Buffalo. Um, how can that person address the issues of your children's going to Buffalo if they're disconnected and not here?
Um, we have systems and procedures to follow every.
Systems, how, I mean, what's?
The systems are, um, we, we have our organization chart. So, um, our central, some of our central office staff is housed in Buffalo, some is housed in Rochester. And some people are, um, working. And some people are working Buffalo some days and some people are working on Rochester some days. So it's, it's a work in progress right now and it's going to stay as is.
Okay, I'll just say that because students here in the city of Buffalo are dear to us. You know, we care for our children, whether in public school or private school. And we take calls from private schools and charter schools along with, and also our charter schools. So we just want to make sure that our kids get the best value education possibly can as we try here in the district. Everybody's not perfect. Your guy's not perfect. We're not perfect. But we aim and the goal to work together so that we can be more equitable for our families, that's all.
But Buffalo is always priority for us because Buffalo is very born. Rochester is the youngest sister right now.
Okay, thank you again.
It's a small school. Rochester is a small school right now. So our main resource goes to Buffalo.
Okay, we care about Rochester schools also, those kids also, those our kids also. So thank you, Mr. Pollak.
So, I'm sorry. So Chair Lady, this concludes this hearing.
No, I have one more question, please.
I apologize. I apologize for President. I didn't see your hand up again.
Thank you. So you currently are under the Board of Regents or SUNY?
Our Buffalo schools are under Board of Regents. Rochester school is under SUNY.
So what will you go under?
SED.
You will go under SUNY?
Yeah, no, SED, state.
Huh?
SED, state.
Board of Regents.
Education project.
You will stay with who you are with or you will go under SUNY? I can't understand that.
We won't go under SUNY. We will be under Board of Regents.
Okay, let the record reflect that.
The Rochester school is current under SUNY. We'll be taking the Rochester from the SUNY and what do you mean, our SED.
That's pretty unusual, isn't it, considering that SUNY is very liberal?
Yes, for two reasons. One is we like to be, like Board of Regents has started this social authorization. So we like to be accountable socially, one. And two is we have really, we have really great working relations with the states. So we decided to move everything to state. But you're right, in most cases, the move is to SUNY. But we decide to be on the state side. Board of Regents.
Thank you.
Actually, Board of Regents is authorized for everything. SED is part of Board of Regents. SED charter schools.
All right, thank you.
I have a question.
Board Member Woods?
I'm, I'm listening to you talking about consolidation. And I'm listening to you saying that you're going to reduce paperwork so you won't have reports going to both state ed and then to SUNY. That says to me that you're trying to make your operations more efficient.
Yes.
Using paperwork and, and eliminating some of the work that some of your staff has to do.
Yes.
And if you're, and if you're consolidating under state ed, my question is, they just changed the forming, the funding formula. Are you going to get a significant increase in state aid? Because we're being told there's going to be increased charters. Is that part of the reason for the efficiency, the consolidation, maybe saving a couple positions and in, in paperwork in one area, allocating staff to another? But is the, is the move also going to increase your revenues based on this new formula that state ed is giving charters?
One is, we're not planning to change our staffing model. So our staffing model will stay same, which is going to take just some of the loads from our current staff. Like CFO will be working maybe a little bit less, like not duplicating work. But we're not planning to change our current staffing model. The efficiency will be work efficiency. Two is, I am not aware of increased funding for charters. If that is the news, thank you for the great news. But I, I honestly, I don't, I'm not aware of that. There is one change in special education. But that is still in discussion. And I'm honestly, I'm not 100% sure how that impact our income. But again, the merger is not going to change anything, regardless of merge or not. If the funding change, the funding is going to change because schools are not staying, schools are not changing. Our three schools stays as is. It's just the management of education corporation is merging.
Do you have a significant reserve or fund balance currently in your financial statements?
Unfortunately, no. We barely made last year our finance covenants, which is 45, 45 days cash. I believe last year we ended up with 50 or 55 days cash on hand. So we, we have two months, two months reserve at the end of last year.
Well, I wish you well then because you, everybody needs to consolidate, do efficiencies. Because if the Buffalo schools have to do efficiencies in our schools, I believe everybody, I do mean everybody, needs to get more efficient.
I 100% agree. And also, as I noted, as I, as I noted, maybe you are or you're not, many small charter schools are extremely in financial difficulty and hardship currently. Thank you. Relatively large schools like us can survive. But again, we ended up last year with 45 days cash on hand. And the previous year, we ended up about five days cash on hand, if I don't recall it right. So this year, hopefully, we are going to be again, like, going, shooting to have at least 60, 60, 70 days cash on hand because we have financial responsible. Our current facilities are financed. And our financing organizations are requiring at least 45 days or 60 days cash on hand. And we are barely making that and we are really trying hard to make that.
Oh, boy.
We are all on the same boat. I'm telling you, we got to, we got to work together to ask state to increase funding. Because another piece of data, last five years, from 2019 to 2024, charter school tuition from state increased 2.5% at all. Like from five years, just 2.5% increase. And inflation, the community inflation this five year is 18.5%. So there's an 18.5% inflation and we got 2.5% increase. We'll do the math and, yeah. That is our problem altogether. We got to work together on this.
Okay, thank you, Board Member Woods. I have one final question. I don't see anybody else's hand. So with what you just indicated about your finances, were you ever at jeopardy of closing?
No, again, we are making 45, 60 days cash on hand covenants. And we are good with that. And also, we are looking for additional finances and from national foundations. Last two years, we were able to get more than $5 million from national foundations, which Buffalo will continue to look for it. But we have our five year foundation model. And we are strictly and well disciplined working with our foundation model. Because it is, it is tough days for everybody. We are making some cuts. We are reducing some of, some cuts. We reduce our summer school. We reduce our, some summer school programs. And also, we are reducing our technology. Yeah, we're, we're not in bad shape financially. Again, we are on 60 days cash on hand level. But also, we're not on, we're not sitting on a $5 million balance.
Yeah, it's, it's hard out here. Now, my last question, I, I wasn't truthful. So were you the charter school that was purchasing Madi campus? I read in the paper.
We are in discussions with them. That's another piece. That's another piece that I will, I will be asking board members if you can donate because we are starting a capital campaign for that. And yeah, we'll be going on a capital campaign for this. Hopefully, we will raise our funds. And we are working with a nonprofit organization from New York City Charter School Development Corporation, CSTC, to, to seek the opportunity. Nothing signed yet. We're in discussions yet. But we like to move our high school building from downtown to a better facility. But it's not like we have a lot of cash on buying buildings. For the last six months, I've been all around asking for money.
Can I, as a mortgage banker, I'd like to go on record to say that organizations that are not financially secure do not enter into agreements to make purchases. So obviously, there's more to this than what's being shared. I'm sure it has something to do with strengthening you in this position to purchase, to consider purchasing things. And so let it be what it is. But, you know, to paint a picture that you're in dire straits and in the process of trying to purchase a multi-million dollar property is a little interesting that we're having this conversation. But good luck to you, as always. I wish you well, my friend.
I, I can share the covenants from financial, required covenant from Financial Institute. It is 45 days cash. That's the only requirement. But we are, we are able to receive this support because of the, the organizational stability and, and in a sense, the outcomes. That, that's, that's kind of, I guess, trust that the Financial Institute is putting out.
I did ask you a question, excuse me. I did have a question, like your question about you planning to get more seats within your building.
No.
When you're going to purchase another location, then I imagine that you will be adding more.
But currently, we don't have any plan to apply for additional seats.
Sure you do. Sure.
If it was.
I mean, it's the size of Madi College. And you're not going to add any more seats? So you're going to continue with the location downtown? There's going to be a permanent fixture? How many students you have there?
About 500.
Use privately students for entire college space?
We'll have 600, but it is our already approved enrollment.
And no expansion of the school?
Currently, no. But in the future, I cannot tell you. Currently, we don't have any plan. Honestly, really, like I thought of being honest. One is because of the enrollments are tight. That's why we are not thinking or we're not planning concretely. And two is finances are tough. And also, you may see that like Madi is a big campus and two, really expensive. It's not that expensive, first of all. And we are not paying, we're not paying down payments, zero down payment. And the other thing is, in Madi campus, there are some buildings, two buildings are old, unusable. And one building is a tech center. Classroom space is only on two buildings. One building is barely for our high school. The other building, in the future, we may move our middle school 78th grade. That's the current plan. But again, maybe next year, we're going to see the increase enrollment demand. And there will be more demand, more opportunities. And I'm not going to say that we're not going to plan anything. But currently, we don't have plan. But I'm not also saying that we're not going to plan anything.
Okay, thank you, Board Member Hurd. Dr. Ebony, do you want to? Oh, one more question. Board Member Larry Scott?
Just real quick, I would just want to add in regards to enrollment. When Madi College was last open, they had an enrollment of 1,800 students. So I just want to add that context. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Scott. I don't see any other hands from any board members. Back to you, Dr. Ebony, to conclude this session. Thank you.
So Chair Lady, Dr. Evans-Brown, this concludes this hearing. I want to thank Mr. Pollak for coming in to discuss his merger. Director Brad Behringer has taken copious notes. What we then do is take these notes and we send them off to the CSO. Mr. Pollak knows what he needs to do in regards to this public hearing. And if there are any comments in the chat, Admir will send them to Director Behringer. And we will also include that in the record to the CSO. So thank you. That concludes this hearing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And so I'll, I believe Larry, Larry Scott, you're on it, right?
Yes, I am next.
Okay, I pass the torch to you.
Thank you, Dr. Evans-Brown. So for student achievement tonight, we are going to get a presentation, an update from our charter school advisor for Westminster Charter School and Enterprise Charter School. Dr. Constance is joining us for that presentation. I thank her for taking the time to join us and give us an update. I will turn to the Superintendent, Dr. Williams, to give any remarks before we turn it over to Dr. Constance Moss.
All right. Not, not a long entry. It's a very, very thorough report. I want to welcome Dr. Moss and certainly express my condolences over your recent loss. I'm looking forward to hearing tonight about, you know, how Westminster and Enterprise are progressing or regressing toward the renewal conditions that have been set forth. Dr. Moss?
Okay, well, thank you very much and good evening, Dr. Williams, and also members of the Buffalo City School District's Board of Education. It is certainly a pleasure to be with you all again. I have been told that I have approximately 20 minutes and we have a lot to get through. So as we proceed, I would ask you to hold your questions until the end of the presentation. Please take your notes and any questions that you might have, we will get to them at the end. Next slide, please. As background, the executive summary is being provided to inform the Buffalo City School District intent to recommend renewal, if that is the case, for recommendation to the Board of Regents. I am going to be authoring findings of each charter school's academic preparedness to meet renewal conditions. We're going to be looking at specific priorities and those priorities include whether or not each charter school has satisfied academic measures. We're going to be focusing on Benchmark 2, that is in regards to teaching and learning from the 2019 performance framework and the Board of Regents 2023-24 renewal site visit protocol, as well as the remaining items in the settlement agreement. Next slide. The purpose of the school advisor's work was to provide service as a consultant to the Board of Education of the Buffalo City School District and serve as liaison between the charter schools and the board, as well as report on charter schools' progress towards meeting renewal conditions. Next slide. Much of the language that is included in this presentation has come directly from the settlement agreement, the contract the New York State Education Department documents. The process involved the advisor engaging in a standardized audit process that provided findings about each charter school's academic preparedness to meet the renewal conditions and sharing those findings. The process strives for evidence-based findings, therefore multiple data sources were used to substantiate findings through interviews, document reviews, and observations, which led to report development. Next slide. For this presentation, deliverables are broken down into three groups. The first group is academic measures. The second is Benchmark Two from the New York State Education Department's framework. And the third comes from Appendix A as part of the settlement agreement. The highest priority deals with the academic measures. And in order to satisfy the academic measures, each charter school had to meet eight out of the 12 measures. Summarizing the key findings in accordance with Benchmark Two was another one of the deliverables, as well as the information that you see below that was part of Appendix A. Next slide. The I Ready assessment was selected to determine attainment of academic measures as listed in the settlement agreement. The academic measures use specific terms, such as median, which is a quality quantity at midpoint of a frequency of distribution of values, annual typical growth, the average annual growth of a student at each grade and placement level, and stretch growth, which is the growth recommended to put students performing below grade level on a path to proficiency and students performing on above grade level for advanced proficiency. These terms are used in the I Ready test. And the I Ready test is a computer-based adaptive assessment designed to measure progress, making it important to focus on improvement in meeting grade level expectations rather than a fixed score. It focuses on improvement or growth over a period of time. Next slide. Of highest priority is the academic measures. And we start with Measure One and Measure Seven. And I will read this briefly. For the 2022-2023 school year, the charter school's median percent progress to annual typical growth of all third through eighth grade general education students in reading and in math will be greater to than the median percent progress to annual typical growth for all third grade through eighth grades, general ed students in reading, taken together, in reading and in math, taken together, enrolled in the 26 Buffalo City School District schools identified in the settlement agreement. After reviewing the information, we actually had 23 schools in the Buffalo City School District that reached the 90% participation by the end of the year. The following schools were not included due to lower than 90% participation in reading. School 74, Hamlin Park. 76, Herman Medeo. School 80, Highgate Heights. And in math, 74, again, Hamlin Park. 76, again, Herman Medeo. And School 92, Build Academy. Also of note, when the negotiations took place, I understand the desire was to have comparable or similar Buffalo Public Schools. Therefore, that excluded criterion-based schools and Buffalo schools that had to have a full K through eighth grade program. Also, students had to be continuously enrolled. And that means that they were enrolled when the school year began in the fall and remained for the entire year. No transfers in or out were included. Also of special note, depending upon the academic measure as we go through this, we could have excluded special education students or included special education students. Specific grade levels might be identified. Below grade level by two or more years could also be included. So the academic measures specifies the criteria. Next slide. In terms of the I Ready, I Ready outcomes can be over 100%. I Ready estimates how each student will grow by taking the median growth of students in each grade nationally and defining that growth amount as 100%. The metric is for typical annual growth. And this means that based on I Ready's data analysis, 100% is the amount of growth a student should experience over one typical school year. Therefore, a student who experiences 150% growth would have shown a year and a half worth of growth in a single school year. The average student taking the I Ready exam will have a median growth score of 100%. Using an example without percentages, most students around the country will make about 100 points of growth on the I Ready assessment each year. With whole school or cohort outcome percentages being based on the median outcome of all students tested. As students have outcomes that are above 100%, the median outcome for the entire school or cohort can also end up being above 100. If a student meets their growth score, that's the number of points needed, they'd be at 100%. If a student's growth score is 50 points, they will increase by 50 points. Therefore, they've met 100%. If they increase by 100 points, they would have an outcome of 200 points. Therefore, they've doubled their growth score. Next slide. So here we're going to be looking at the measures for one and seven. And here we have reading across Buffalo City School District. The general ed students that were estimated as being eligible in grades three through eight totaled 6,660 students. The tested number was 6,293 students, or 95%. And the outcome for the district, Buffalo Public Schools, is 67. That's the median annual growth percentage. For Enterprise, we had, and I had to make a change here because looking at, and I recheck and double check and looking at the numbers here, the actual number of students that were eligible to participate at Enterprise in the reading and math assessment was 185. So you can make a change to your PowerPoint there. 185. And the tested is not 209, but the tested was 178 for 96.2% participation. All of the data throughout this report was accurate in comparing the reports that I received from I Ready with the school reports. Well, therefore, Enterprise's outcome for reading was 146%, showing the median growth of their students. For Westminster, we had 294 students that were eligible to participate, meaning that they were continuously enrolled from the beginning of the school year till the end. No transfers in and out. The tested number was 293 for 99% participation. And Westminster's outcome was 169% medium annual typical growth. In terms of this row, this is for math, again, for Buffalo City School District. And we had 6,521 students estimated as being eligible. The tested was 600 and 6,144 students for 94% participation. And Buffalo's outcome in terms of math was 70% median annual typical growth. For Enterprise, in math, we had 184 students actually eligible. We had 173 that actually were tested for 94% participation, with the Enterprise outcome being 113%, being the median or midpoint on the frequency of students' annual typical growth. For Westminster, eligible students was 295. Those was tested was 293 for 99% participation. And their outcome was 143%. Next slide. Now this one deals with Measure Two and Measure Eight. For the 2022-2023 school year, the charter school's median percent progress to annual typical growth for all third through eighth grade students in reading and in math will be equal to or greater than 110%. That's setting the bar just a little bit higher for the charter schools. Next slide. Moving across, for Enterprise, for the students that were eligible in third through eighth grade, for all students totaled 216. Tested was 209 for 97% participation and their outcome was 152%. For Westminster, eligible students was 308. Tested was 307 for 99% participation with their outcome being 165%. For math, for Enterprise, again, 216 students were eligible. 205 participated for 95% with an outcome of 117%. And for Westminster, 308 were eligible. Tested 306 for 99% participation and the outcome was 143%. Next slide. For measures three and nine, for the 2022-2023 school year, the charter school's median percent progress of annual typical growth for all third through eighth grade students, two or more grade levels below in reading and math, will be equal to or greater than 100%. Now I Ready understands that many students are below grade level. As a result, they set stretch goals that describe the dramatic progress a student may need to make up, to catch up to grade level proficiency over time. Next slide. For reading and measure number three, we had at Enterprise, 153 students eligible with 148 participating in the test of 97% with an outcome of 161. For Westminster, there were 220 students eligible, 218 were tested for 99% participation with an outcome of 151. In math, for Enterprise, we had 180 students eligible with 171 participating in the test for 95% participation with an outcome of 120%. And for Westminster, for eligible third through eighth grade students, the total was 173 with 171 tested for 98% participation with an outcome at Westminster of 143%. Next slide. For the next measures, four and 10, for the 2022-2023 school year, 10% of all of the charter schools' third through eighth grade students will meet their annual stretch goal for reading and for math. As mentioned before, stretch goals are in place because the fact that some students will be performing below grade level will then be assessed and a goal will be developed so that they can be on a path to progress and to move forward. Next slide. For Enterprise, the number of students that were tested was 219. And, I'm sorry, the number of students that was eligible was 216 and tested was 209 for 97% participation with an outcome of 26%. For Westminster, 308 were eligible. Tested was 307 for 99% participation with an outcome of 34%. For math, for Enterprise, the tested eligible students was 180 and the tested was 171 for 95% participation. And the outcome was 20%. And then for Westminster, the number of students that were eligible was 308 and the number that was tested was 306 for 99% participation with an outcome of 35%. And all of those were well above the 10% that was included in the academic measure. Next slide. For measures five and 11, in the 2022-2023 school year, the charter school's median percent progress of annual typical growth for all kindergarten through, through second grade students in reading and in math will be equal to or greater than 100%. Next slide. And as you can see from this chart, for Enterprise, we can go all the way across to the last column, they achieved, their outcome was 110%. Westminster, again, in reading, 141%. Enterprise for math, K through two, 108%. And Westminster for math also 150%. Next slide. And lastly, in terms of the academic measures, for measure six and 12, in January of 2024, 50% of all charter schools' third through eighth grade students will show growth in reading and in math as measured by improvement between the fall 2023 diagnostic assessment and the winter 2024 diagnostic assessment. Next slide. So this, you'll see in outcomes column that it shows TBD or to be determined. The assessment has just been completed and so the data will be reviewed and made available soon. Next slide. Now we're going to look at the next deliverable. In this particular area, we utilize the New York State Education Department's 2019 Performance Framework and Board of Regents 2023-2024 Renewal Site Visit Protocol. Next slide. We are focusing on teaching and learning. And those indicators are really benchmarked against instruction in areas of instruction. And evidence should reveal that the school staff has a shared understanding of high-quality instruction, that instructional delivery fosters engagement with all students, that the school differentiates instruction in order to ensure equity and access for all students, and that the school provides staff with professional development opportunities. Next slide. To capture evidence for Benchmark Two, Teaching and Learning, the methodology for the renewal site visit involves an in-person renewal site visit, which took place at each school during the month of January 2024. The school advisor conducted classroom observations using the following renewal site visit protocol. Collaborated with school leaders to arrange site visit dates, discussed purpose and performance framework. Arranged for school leaders' involvement in classroom observations. Worked with school leaders to develop the site visit and observation schedules. Pre-observation meetings took place with school leaders responding to pre-classroom visit prompt that's included in that protocol. And after each classroom visit, meetings were held using post-observation prompts from the State Education Department's protocol. Next slide. Site visit results were as follows. Five in-person classroom observations occurred at Enterprise in the following grades. E L A, second, fifth, and math, first, fifth, and science. We noted that out of the five teachers, two were not certified. Eleven in-person classroom observations occurred at Westminster in the following subjects and grades. E L A, first, second, third, fourth, sixth, and eighth. In math, kindergarten, third, fifth, and eighth, and social studies, seventh grade. Observations were approximately 20 minutes in length and joint observation. Observations were approximately twenty minutes in length and joint observations were held with school leaders. Just to be, make a note, throughout the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three school year, I've visited, visited and conducted observations in all classrooms. Next slide. A summary of evidence from classroom observations for enterprise follows previous summaries done by Buffalo Public School administrators. Visit to the classrooms revealed teachers possess a wide range of skills. Teachers are either very consistent in providing high-quality instruction to all students or challenged to implement routines that would lead all students to high levels of thinking and achievement. The school has plans to involve highly successful teachers to serve as resources to identify teachers with the intent of strengthening practices that will ensure equity and access for all students. While there are limited number of students with disabilities, a new plan has been developed, has been adopted, which was in two thousand and twenty-two that students with disabilities enrollment applications in order to increase the numbers. Next slide. The summary of evidence from classroom observations for Westminster. Visits to classroom reveal inconsistent practices of posting and making reference to objectives of lessons. Teachers mainly provided whole group direct instruction and modeling with limited opportunity provided for all students to independently practice and demonstrate understanding. Efforts to check for understanding amongst all students to ensure making connections varied. And teachers efforts to involve all students and hire or the thinking was minimal. Next slide. And this is in the third and final group. That was referenced in Appendix A of the settlement agreement assessing the learning environment. For enterprise, a review of enterprise's school improvement plan that included updates. And I'll just briefly highlight a few. In terms of the at-risk students two E at the bottom, they have a full-time Dean of Special Education in place this year. Next slide. Again, for enterprise, a review of their school improvement plan included under student achievement three B. They have deans to support grade bands such as K through four and five through eight. They were added this year and they split the responsibilities. Next slide. And continuing for enterprise's review of their school improvement plan under board oversight six A, they recruited two new board members, including parent representation, adopted annual code of conduct, updated all recruitment, hiring and onboarding procedures. And then lastly, they've hired a chief executive officer who supervises the principal and senior director of observation, of operations. Next slide. For Westminster, under the item assessing the learning environment as found in Appendix A. A review of Westminster's improvement plan revealed that they were updating the New York State Math Proficiency Goals for two thousand and twenty-four. And under student engagement three B, they developed a new plan for chronic absenteeism. That is the end of our presentation. And I'm opening the floor up for questions.
Thank you, Dr. Moss, for a very thorough presentation. I'm just going to make a couple remarks before I move to questions from our board members. Well, first, just a question, Dr. Moss, what, we did not include state assessments in measuring progress from both charter schools, is that correct?
In terms of the settlement agreement, what was negotiated was that the I-Ready assessment would be the measure that would be utilized and then we would monitor the data from that.
Okay, so I just want to, I think, point to the, how nuanced some of these metrics are with standardized assessments. And I don't doubt the growth that you reported from both schools. But just for clarification, you could have a student that meets that annual, annual growth goal or target and meets the stretch goal, but they still could be behind grade level and sometimes multiple grade levels below, correct?
Correct.
And then just want to, again, point out the nuance of state assessments, other standardized measures that we use. And enterprise last year, actually, on their state assessments, despite the growth we saw here from I-Ready, was with four others, three other schools, second worst in Western New York for proficiency in ELA at twelve percent proficient, proficient per the state. And then math was, actually, had the lowest proficiency in Western New York at six percent. That, that was for enterprise and that's with only nine percent of students with disabilities and three percent of students with, that are English language learners. So I'm going to move to my colleagues on the board. Looks like President Belton Cotman has her hand raised. We're going to just go with hands that are raised because it looks like some of the cameras are off. So I see President Belton Cotman, you have the floor.
Thank you, Dr. Moss. Certainly, we picked the right person to do the job. Happy New Year to you. I'd like to get your ability or to use you within our own school district to analyze some of the things that are going on. It would be a big plus, I'm sure, to have a breath of fresh air approaching some of the things we're looking at, particularly with our data-driven environment. I wanted to note for the record that ideally, it's a fraction of how many students were assessed in relationship to what happened in Buffalo. Your number said roughly around sixty-six hundred or sixty-five, four hundred or something versus three hundred or if we're rounding up. I like that to show that. It was interesting to see that it appeared that Westminster had, you were able to do more visits with Westminster. Is there any reason why you were not able to assess enterprise as equally as much as you were to Westminster based on your observations that I saw on that one slide? It was, I think, the ratio was quite, almost half of what you were allowed to do in one building.
According to the protocol that I followed, the schedule was to be developed in collaboration with the school. And that is what, you know, we did. The school had selected the particular grade levels for me to visit in January. Now, you also will remember that we had a whole week off given the, the weather, the inclement weather. And so, you know, there was some limitation. We wanted to get the, the observations completed. Then when I went to Westminster, again, they had created the schedule and I was in agreement with that. With the caveat that, as I had mentioned before, I had visited every classroom at both schools. So I had a baseline in terms of what I was looking at, what was, what I was observing and what might be applicable for each.
Okay. What do you perceive the next steps is with this according to how it's been presented to you? Are you, do you do this year? Are you winding down? What exactly is going on with that? Please help me understand your role moving forward.
The contract and per the settlement agreement has been completed as of February. I've completed all of my work. Now I'm presenting the information and the findings to you all to just inform your next steps as a board in terms of the renewal recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Do you know, I know it probably didn't come under your purview, if, um, then I want to ask you that question. I'll ask Ebony that question. Dr. Bullock, our representative for the board, did we have a board, someone to attended the board meetings for these two charters or not?
Yes, based on my best recollection, both charters did submit to the district names of the board members and that they have been in attendance to the board meetings.
And so have you contacted them to get any feedback?
No, I have not. I can, but I have not.
Well, I think part of reviewing this, making sure that we've done our due diligence is that that piece is addressed because if I remember right, I think we were responsible or supposed to have something, feedback, some feedback or something from them. And so I need to make sure that we're covering that. I'm trying to go over my mind if there were anything else that we may have overlooked. And if so, please let us know because one of the reasons why we're at this junction is because we did not dot every I and cross every T initially. And so thank you so much for the work you've done with, with these, as, as the advisor. What was your formal title, Dr. Moss?
School advisor.
School advisor, which is the equivalent of distinguished educator, okay? As far as I'm concerned. Thank you so much for the work you've done.
You're welcome.
Thank, thank you, President Belton Cotman. I see a hand raised in City Hall. Board member Hurd.
Thank you, Chairman Scott. I just have a couple of questions. Thank you for your very detailed work on Dr. Moss and Dr. Bullock and, and just paying such great attention to detail. I just have a question. Mine was reticulated in both of these, on both of these campuses. Could you tell us because the, the students that you said were tested was the ones that stayed the entire year? So we have a number of students that, that wasn't tested. And then was there a student that was released from that program throughout the school year? Like returned back into the Buffalo Public Schools or, or left the city entirely?
Yes, there were students that were not involved in the count in terms of tested because they were not, as I had mentioned before, what they call continuously enrolled. That meant from the beginning of the school year to the end of the school year without any breaks, anything. That they were there at those particular two schools. And so they, or they met the eligibility requirement that was negotiated by the, the lawyers when they put together the settlement agreement. With, in regards to enterprise, they had, and I'm looking over my shoulder because want to make sure I have this correct. They had fourteen students that exited enterprise and five came back to Buffalo Public Schools. And that information was provided as of December two thousand and twenty-three. Now, of course, the most recent middle of the year I-Ready assessment was administered in January. So if those students were within the grade levels that were identified as criteria, if you will, in the measures, that could have had some impact in terms of the beginning of the school year numbers for the last two measures, which were seven, eight or eight or seven. I have to take a look at that one. But that was for enterprise. I don't have the number of students that left Westminster. So yeah, for, for measure twelve and for measure six, the data two thousand and twenty-four was to be reviewed.
Okay, Dr. Moss, the reason I asked you that question was because it's been notorious for charter schools to keep their grade levels high by sending children that don't fit their program back to the Buffalo Public Schools, which receive a larger number returns back in, in December, in January of the year. And if this could have a reflection of the tests you never done, I'm not saying it was done purposely. I'm not saying this could have had a, this impact was, you know, precisely done, you know, so that kids don't test. But is there a way that the children could be tested that wasn't tested? Or to, or the numbers of children that were coming to the Buffalo Public Schools, could a district find a way to see where they stand at with their proficiency in reading, writing, and math scores?
Sir, the students, be it whether they were with the charter schools or they, let's say, went back to Buffalo Public Schools, would have been involved in the assessment because Buffalo administers the I-Ready assessment as well. When we're talking about the, this particular report, those students that were not necessarily continuously enrolled in Buffalo, meaning they weren't in Buffalo Public Schools in the beginning of the fall school year to the end point for that particular measure, they would not have necessarily been in this report. But they certainly have results. The same is the case for those students that were at the charter school. I hope I'm answering your question. And then one other point. For enterprise, when they provided a report to the board in December of two thousand and twenty-three, their report indicated that they had nine, had ninety-six percent student retention. So that's, that's the data that has been provided. And I can't discount that at this point because I have no reason to.
I, I thank you. I do understand your need for the stretch goals and, and how they can be calculated here in this formula. But I would like if the district can, those students that have returned back to the district and we can see those, those numbers and see if they're, they correlate with the numbers that's here that you had given us, if that's possible.
I think the Office of Shared Accountability might be able to answer that request.
All right. Thank you, Board Member Hurd. Last, we have Vice President Dr. Kathy Evans-Brown.
Dr. Moss, thank you for such a detailed report, very robust, and I think I got a lot out of it. So one of the slides you mentioned, you, you show thing like, and I might be wrong, showed where there were percentage of kids at both schools who probably needed some help in terms of increasing proficiency. So the question I have, do you think that the schools will give those kids pertinent intervention to get them up to par to the other students?
In terms of the two charter schools, what I have observed is that they're very attentive to the results that they get in terms of the, the students' progress. They have put forth a significant effort. I mean, quite frankly, this was survival. This was survival mode. So they put forth a great deal of emphasis on looking at the students' growth as well as looking at the potential in terms of those stretch goals. And they also did quite a lot of work in terms of intervention with those students that were identified. Now, again, the growth really depends upon where the student started from. You could have a third grader that's functioning or performing at a first grade proficiency level. And so, you know, the intervention is key. And I, I really think that, you know, there's dedication. I, I've observed the dedication to really, at both of the schools, the two charter schools, to really assist those students. They, they've demonstrated a commitment to dedicating the resources and also maintaining throughout the year a focus on where the students are. And also participation in the assessment because as, as you saw in the report, I intentionally put down for each assessment the percent of participation by those students. And they really did a, you know, a, a good job of making sure that they, they had over the ninety percent for each of those measures. And given the fact of their, their real focus, each school met ten out of those academic measures while they were required to meet eight.
Yeah, that was very impressive. So thank you so much. And I'm sure that Yeah, that was very impressive. So thank you so much. And I'm sure that, you know, even though this was a force kind of assessment, I am sure that the charters appreciate, you know, the value, you know, of your, of your work, you know, for them. And like President Cotman said, we can certainly use you down the road with Buffalo Public Schools. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President. And Dr. Moss, thank you for your time and your work on this, your diligence, your great presentation tonight. It is much appreciated for you being able to assist us in this endeavor. And Dr. Williams, any last thoughts before we officially close out Student Achievement and transition to our next committee? You're muted, Dr. Williams.
Famous words post-pandemic. I echo the sentiments that everyone has shared. I think that the report is very thorough, very professional, and just thank you very much, Dr. Moss. Thank you.
Yeah, my pleasure. You're most welcome. Take care. Good night.
Have a good night, Dr. Moss. All right, we transition to Educational Support Committee. Do we have somebody to chair that meeting?
Yep, I had talked to Dr. Crestis and was going to just go ahead and get us started on that committee, if that works for everybody. So I just wanted to say, and I think Leslie is on the call now. I'm pretty confident of that. But I do wanted to just give some brief updates and then I'll be handing it right over to Leslie Grant. So first and foremost, I want to say that school systems exist to improve student outcomes and that school boards exist to represent the visions and values of the community, which is a lot of what we're going to hear from Leslie today as we talk about our next steps in moving forward. And the last piece that I want to say is that student outcomes don't change until adult behaviors change. And it's something that we're going to hear over and over and over on repeat. So I want to, and I think it's important that anytime we invite Leslie into the space, that we kind of start out with those three really important pivotal points and that are reminders for us. And just a couple of updates. Myself, Dr. Kathy Evans-Brown, Board Member Paulette Woods and Board Member McCosey are going to be heading out to Louisville, Kentucky tomorrow. And we will be beginning our year-long deep dive cohort process with the Council of Great City Schools and a very specific focus on the student outcome-focused governance. So that deep dive process has started. And I certainly can speak for myself to say I already feel the pressure of the workload and the information that we will be, you know, kind of disseminating over the next 12 months. I'm excited for it. And then we did host the Implementation Committee, a book club with stakeholders from the BPS community. The meeting, there were two meetings. One was with Leslie and she talked with our stakeholders, members of Parent Congress and folks within the community about the first half of the book and the process the board is embarking on. And, and then our last meeting was this past Monday. And we had A.J. Crable join us himself and facilitate the discussion and the dialogue. We had several board members present as well as, again, our stakeholders. And we talked about our thoughts on the book and how A.J. got to the point of writing the book as he did and the impact that it's had. So it was pretty cool. And a nice, a nice fun experience for us to engage with folks and start to lay some groundwork. Sorry if I'm speaking fast, but I want to make sure we make the most of our time. So I do want to pass it off to Leslie Grant, who I can see is here and ready. Leslie, over to you.
Thank you very much. Cindy, thank you for that. And I was able to catch the tail end of the meeting previous. And I'm excited that y'all are excited about hearing about data around students. You're building your muscles for that. And I think you're going to get, enjoy the process as we go along. And you're going to hopefully understand what you just understood about those schools to a greater degree about all of your students. So what, and again, thanks to each of you who are committed to the cohort. And I look forward to seeing you all tomorrow. But tonight, what I would like to do, and I've had the opportunity, say for Mr. Hurd, and it doesn't look like he's in the room anymore, have had the opportunity to walk through the list that y'all have put together in terms of what you believe community is, what it means to you, and who you think needs to be heard about our upcoming goals and guardrail setting process. So again, one of the primary jobs of the Board of Education is to represent the community, to represent the community's vision for the students in your district and to represent the values. And so as we begin that process, you are going to go out and listen to the community with an ear and an eye towards what they want those things to be, how they want that set. You're going to come back and take the data the superintendent is preparing about the reality for students, match those two things up and come up with some very smart goals that will be monitored through years. This is a big, beginning of a very big process, as I've mentioned. I think you're going to very much appreciate once you get in and start understanding the monitoring component of this. But in order to do that, we asked you each to assemble a list. And we've gone through and done a, several rounds of consolidation with that list. I have a, um, let's see, we have currently on the list 121 separate entities. And I know that y'all, Dr. Williams, I know that nobody there wants to do 121 meetings, especially when I, it's going to require two of you to be there. So I think you did a really good thoughtful job, the multiple iterations of this, bringing it down to what we currently have, our 16 separate meetings. So yay. And if, I think probably what might be helpful, again, my goal for y'all is by the end of this meeting, you agree on this list and next steps moving forward. So I just want to make sure I don't see a couple of folks and, but again, Mr. Hurd, except for you, I have not, everybody else is kind of way in. But I did want to share the full list. If y'all have any questions or concerns about it, you need to talk with each other about this. So if you, okay, to share my screen here? I'll try. Did that work? Can you all see that? And is it big enough?
We can see it. I don't know if it's big enough.
Okay, hang on. Let me make it a little bigger. And I'll stop scrolling to make y'all sick there. Okay. I've taken the name of the contact people out just for our conversation tonight. I'm interested in the groups. We can discuss the specific names of contact folks. Y'all, y'all are going to have to fill that in. But so broadly, this first group here, we have 23 different groups in it. I'm actually going to take it down a notch. There we go. So we can see that. 21, 22 groups that are in this. These are largely community-based organizations that have a relationship with Buffalo Public Schools. All of the relationships are not going to be the same. They're, they, all of these entities operate in different structures and frameworks. And again, their relationship with BPS is different. However, through multiple iterations of conversations with y'all, I think we ended up here as one big group. Now, there was another group that is down below this. And there was a talk from several of you and it agreed to, but everyone, I think, around pulling out sort of the ethnic or cultural groups. And you had, were going back and forth on whether or not to take, leave this here or put these in, move them down. So I need y'all to have a discussion about this.
Leslie, can you make that a tad bigger?
I wish I could make my...
I did want to ask. I thought that the list is set based on the last meeting that we had with the implementation team.
So I just want to make sure all the colleagues, yeah, all of your colleagues are good with this. Everybody's seen it. Just, yeah. Final handoff. But I did, I don't recall this. I thought that we were going to get more conversation on this. So is this good to leave here?
Can, can I add in? I, I thought, and I was going to bring in and diversified a little bit to see if we could add in some of the other cultural groups such as maybe Arab-Americans and...
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's down here.
Further now. Okay, all right. Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. So again, this, I think that, understanding was that this list is complete. Is there anybody who has any heartburn about this?
Well, I, I still have some concerns about lumping all black groups together. I don't know why. You know, I just thought if it was going to be a cult, it's going to be about culture. And then we're doing diversity, equity and inclusion, that we should really think about making sure that the group is mixed. That's all. That's all I had to say.
So leaving it here, though. This is a very mixed group as it is right now.
But so leaving it in there, yes, and not separate. No, right.
Okay. Yeah, okay. And each of you should have a copy of this email to you if you, if you need to see it on your computer or something. You can, we can send that to you. All right. So we're good with this. And again, the point of this is not to hear from any of these groups about their specific interaction with you or what they bring to the table or, you know, you're not asking them about their services or anything like that. The purpose of putting these groups together is so that you can consolidate your, your time in a way that, you know, you're going to be delivering a message about what you want them to tell you, about what they want, what does the vision they see for students in BPS. So I just want to make sure nobody's thinking that there's an ask or anything like that to these groups. So, all right, the second group here came with sort of the philanthropic and support groups. These are the colleges, universities, one sort of two and through college sort of organizations. Any, okay. This group, again, was the sort of the cultural or ethnic groups together. And again, Sharon, or any of y'all can add some into this at some point. This group was the parent groups, sort of organized parent groups, the parent congress groups, PPOs. This next group was the more community-centric groups, the place-based community centers. Next group had to do with, I guess, political elected offices, law enforcement, ones that are governmentally involved or engaged with, with the BPS, the public transit and whatnot here. Then we had the parent center groups. So I think we need to, yeah.
So how is that different? Or how did we, how is that different than the organized parent groups? Number four. How, how is that different? I'm just trying to, is it because of where you're having the meeting? Is that what we're talking about?
So here is the, here are the other, the other one, the group before.
Right. Okay, so those are like committee groups of the board. Okay. So they're parent groups of the board, of the district. Okay. It's what I'm saying there.
Okay.
And number four.
The parent congress and whatnot.
Yeah, okay.
I don't know if BPTO is in here because it looks like it's in the other one down below.
Yeah, it's in there. It should be in there.
Should be here or down below?
Because it's organized, it's an organized district group.
It's not down below.
Park District PTOs, all PTOs in Buffalo Public Schools?
Or A's, PTOs and PTAs, because we have a couple of PTAs.
So should they go in the one above or below?
I think above.
What?
That one, PTAs should go with the other parent group, with, associated with the district.
I'm confused about that group number seven. I'm not clear who it is. Do they exist or are we just going after some people? East Zone Parent Center, that's a place to have the event at. Is that a group? Is that a group?
And that, when I weighed in on this, that, that's why I said this kind of, the way it's written, if we just kind of narrow it down to some of these groups, it could exclude some parents that don't feel like they belong to any of these groups.
Okay, so you wanted to have it in zones. I got you. Okay.
Yeah, but those aren't groups. You're right, Sharon.
Right. Well, we, actually, we addressed your issue, Larry. Yeah, I think we addressed that in a way that is, is going to work. Okay. So we're going to, we need to come back to this group, I guess.
So Leslie, it looks like essentially what's going to happen is when you remove the, the zone parent centers and you look at that, you will have narrowed that group out very small. And you can move the PTOs up in number four because the parent centers are being removed. That's addressed with Larry's later on in those additional four groupings. And so then you can move, all PTOs in Buffalo Public Schools can go up with the parent congress.
And this is a duplicate, this would fall under this.
That can just, yep, get rid of that.
And we the parent, it can go up to number four too.
Yep. So this is a logistic, I mean, this is a place, parent centers is a place. We took her that below. What about these two?
So Parent Network Western New York is actually a 501(c)(3). I mean, it's a nonprofit. So it could go up with CBOs.
The first one.
Yeah.
BPTO is, BPTO is a nonprofit too.
Is it?
Yep.
Yeah. And isn't Parent Network tied to CPAC or isn't Kim Hernandez, like, there's a strong connection between Parent Network and one of the parent congress groups? They're like...
But it's kind of, it is separate though. I think she plays a double role.
Is there any harm in just putting, putting this and putting all the PTOs up at here?
No problem.
Okay.
I think it makes sense. Including we the parent, include them all.
Yep. Now we have 15. Good work.
Yay.
Good. We might have 50 people if we're lucky. 20 people if we're lucky. My concern about parent, I have a concern about Parent Network being in that group because Parent Network is the only group that's getting paid from, or receive any money from the Board of Ed. And I don't think they should be in the group with people who are not being paid. Okay, you understand what I mean? We need to put them up with the community-based, or we need to put, yeah, community-based organizations. Do you understand what I'm saying?
I agree.
Yeah, I agree too. I think they should be up at the top with the CBOs.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Parent Network.
Okay.
Didn't we have a contract with MVP too? Do we pay MVP? MVP? I thought we were paying...
Multiple contracts.
There's a different relationship. Parent Network, are they in our schools? They are, they're a group that children, people are referred to, but they're not housed inside the group, inside the school, right?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure.
They're not.
Right. School-based management teams. This goes away.
I just want to clarify it because that's a good point, uh, President Kotman. If we are, um, paying or, or bringing money to any of these organizations, do they go in a separate category? Or do they go in where we all thought and believe they need to be? Like, I'm good with everybody being in four because those, that's where we see them in the community. But can we just clarify if we're going to move folks around according to whether or not we, we.
But I think the key word, I think Jennifer, the key word is organized parent group. That's what I think the key word is. Are they part of our parent congress? Are they, or a group that we've accepted as part of they, as a result of being a part of the parent congress. Uh, they get paid money for something that would include that, the community health workers or whomever. I don't see, see where that.
Is it a group that somehow, is it a group that somehow represents the interest of parents? Whether it's volunteers, whether it's people who drug off the street regularly, whether it's, you know, a organization that makes tons of money off parents. But they represent parents. It doesn't matter, I would say it does not matter the structural formation. Are they there because their interest is from a parent perspective?
The parent, are we talking about the parent network?
Yeah.
Anybody?
Yeah, the parent network specifically work with parents of disabled children. They do a lot of education, um, and linkage referral and training. And they stand alone. Yeah. They're located at 10, 10, 21 Broadway.
So put them in with the parent, organized parent groups, number four.
Um, I'm just going to put an asterisk in that.
And we the parent, we the parent needs to be in number four too.
Mm-hmm.
And PTA, Ida's group needs to be specifically in there. They are great, uh, parent.
What is that?
PTA.
PTO and PTAs, uh, we, we talked about those. PTO.
They have their own, where, isn't that what they were called? Community PTA?
All right. We're just going to put that there. Okay.
Well, but you have, that's wrong. Buffalo PTO is its own entity. There's not multiple PTOs.
Right.
It doesn't go with PTAs.
And, and you can put PT, BPTO and BPTA and PTO. Cause they are parent teacher organizations that are not a part of either one of those. PTO right there. All right. PTO, right. PTA slash PTO, they're both the same. Uh, they're just parent groups. I mean, inside the school, I shouldn't say parent groups. There's people, yeah, that'll work.
Okay. All right. I would encourage us, let's not get too nitty on this. Um, y'all are going to do a lot of work with this. I just want to make sure there's no big.
Made it real. What is the second group again, please? Can you tell me what the second group is again? Those are, um.
Philanthropic?
No, those are higher ed groups. Okay. I got you. Okay.
And the foundations. Yep. Um, so again, Sharon, you're going to do some work or all of y'all could do some work to, um.
I'm going to try to find some groups. I don't know how.
Make sure that you're covering, you know, the widest net possible for, um, your community. Um, so, all right. So these were again, the, um, the community center groups that were place-based. The governmental groups. This one's going away. The, this one had to do with faith-based organizations, churches. So there was a network of religious communities. Is Ann still on? I saw her earlier. Uh, no. Okay. She had said that she had a connection with this, but if you're going to extend an invitation to faith-based groups, you need to make sure that it is big, broad and wide and, you know, wide. Um, you don't have to weigh into individual ones tonight. Some of you listed individual churches and then some of you were like, you know, like, let's cast a net. So. Um.
Voice Buffalo is the, Voice Buffalo is the city, uh, right now, the one speak, uh, CBO that congregates religious groups together. They are the faith-based organization, state and nationally, um, recognized for bringing, uh, all denominations together. And it's, you know, they haven't been, you know, on their game, but they're officially who I know of right now.
But they're, I think, they're already up here.
Yeah. So that's what you say, some of these churches might already be members because they have over a hundred members within the Buffalo, Western New York area. That might be a part of their organization anyway. And speaking with the organizer of that group. You know, it chosen to be a site. I would really. Yeah, faith-based organizing.
That's all.
Just like, um, Coalition of an Economic Justice is labor-based organizing and, you know, and the, the. I can't think of who they are right now.
Right. Do y'all have any heartburn about moving them down to the faith-based?
Yeah, that makes sense. Mm-hmm.
Hey, I'm sorry, Leslie, when you say broad and wide, what do you mean by that?
Um, I think y'all need to figure out what you want by this.
I mean, you should terminology broad and wide. Um, what, what do you mean by, um, broad and wide?
I just think that if you end up inviting eight churches, that's going to look a little stilted. So. But this is your listening session and I'm going to stop weighing in on it. Y'all need to decide who you want to invite, who you want to talk to. I'm sorry.
Terrence in the meeting, when she talked about faith-based groups, she was saying that. I, I don't think I saw any Catholic groups in there. Uh, she was saying inter-denominational ministers, um. You know, the whole Baptist group, not just the individual churches. And, um, I don't know if there's any Muslim groups in there. She was just saying, make sure we don't leave any, any groups out. That, that's what, uh, Leslie said to us in the meeting.
Um, so.
Thank you.
Any, um, about this one, um, this had to do more with business. Specific business interest, um, and specifically the pipeline of training that students would have. But this, uh, all had to do with apprenticeship CTE training. This one group here had to do with, um, uh, youth support organizations. That are directly supporting your youth. Um, we had one group specifically, we wanted to make sure that we heard from, um, students. Um, that their voice came through independently and very, uh, meaningfully in this. Get on y'all. And then we had, um, faculty staff from this last couple get more important as we get, um, this, uh, hearing from the staff. Hearing from the cabinet, hearing from the teachers, hearing from people who are, um, uh, specific adults in the BPS system. So having a meeting specifically for those folks. And then Larry, this was the, um, thought to address that was that we end, you end the listening, um, the listening sessions. With large quadrant-based meetings that would be open to all, um, folks who are affiliated with BPS. So. Parent guardian care, caregiver, student, staff.
So there would be four meetings. I'm like, okay, got it.
Yeah. I mean, this is, yeah, this is proposal. So again, if there's any. Um, all right. So. Does anybody, uh, do you need this? I don't know if there's a chat where I could stick the link, but, um, do you want me to email this to you? But bottom line is I need to, I'll go through it. Let's go through it again slowly. I just want to make sure y'all are all, everybody's good. Cause what we're going to do next is we're going to, um. Have each and every one of you signed up for one of the script practices?
Was that question?
It's next week. Um, I had, uh, given you a little form to sign up for a practice session for the script.
Um, yes, I signed up.
Okay.
Can't remember when, but.
Okay. Um, I'll send out, um, I'll try to send out reminders tonight to y'all to do that. There is a website that I set up that was an implementation site so that I can sort of put everything up there for y'all. So you don't have to go hunt through your email support like so drastically. I've got, um, that form on there. So if you haven't already signed up, please do that. Now, as you all understand, the purpose of that is that when you do sign up for these meetings, there's, you know, now I guess 15 different meetings. Our request is that you have one person who presents the script. And you're going to talk to people about why you're scripting this. You want to make sure that every single one of these groups has the equal and equitable opportunity. To hear exactly what you want from them and that it's the same no matter what group you're standing in front of. So one person's going to present the script. Um, we'll have a slide deck and the other person can help making sure that everything that, you know, happens is recorded. We'll have a, um, all right. Do you want me to, I want to go through this again. But, um, once we get this done, once y'all sign up for this, again, it's very important that you have, uh, a very good handle on the script. So. All right. So again, this, uh, first group is here. Second group, what had to do with the higher ed and, um, foundations. Third group had to do with the community, uh, cultural. Affiliate groups. Next one had to do with parents. Next one had to do with, um, place-based, uh, community organizations. Next had to do with your elected governmental organizations, direct affiliation to BPS. This one is going away. We've taken care of all these and others. This one was the faith-based groups. And then we had the business group. We have the youth support groups. Had a student group and we were, um, hoping to maybe pull in your student rep to help organize this meeting. Faculty and staff, uh, employees, all adults in BPS. And then this one again, if anybody is unable to come to one of the previous that they were not, or, you know, were unable to make those, they could come to these. So. So now I was going to, what I would like to do, just so you have continuity and, um, you know, not a bunch of folks, um, coming into this. If we will, um, we can put it up, y'all had a conversation, I think, with each other offline about who's doing what. Um, again, I think you have to ensure that the message is consistent across the board. We need to get your form set up that you're going to have, that you're going to, um, uh, you know, uh, weigh in on. Have each of you weighed in on? The script for me? I don't know that yet. We had, yeah. Okay. All right. So what you're actually asking the people. What you want to know about is, you know, broadly the vision and values. But what questions specifically you asked to get there, we need to, uh, make a decision about that. And then, um, decide who is going to physically, who is going to reach out, who is going to make these emails, who is going to do this work? So.
Leslie, and Leslie, was that the Google form that you had us fill out about the way in on the script?
Uh, there was, um. Yes. Yeah. Yep.
Okay.
Yeah. You did that. Yes. Yes. Sorry. It's kind of, yeah. You had filled that one out.
Okay, thank you.
Was that in an email?
I'm sure. I'll send, I'll recirculate it. It's on the, did you get the website?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I'll be with you when I figure it out.
But just, um, yeah. Are there any, um, any of the next steps unclear?
Yes.
Yeah.
So I have a question. So let's go to that first group, which seems to be the largest group. All right. So can you give us an example of how that would work? Let's say Jen and I decided we wanted to do group one. Tear up and, and do it. Right? So she would be the scripter, I'll be the recorder. So, I mean, of course we'll talk to each other. So can you give us an example of how you might? That may look, what that may look like?
Uh, well, first of all, you're going to have to, um, figure out where. Um, in our initial thing, we had said, you know, if you have meetings that you want to go to, other people are already hosting. Um, I think these groups break it down into, uh, you know, whatever, however many different 15 meetings that you're hosting. So first of all, you have to figure out a place, um, and a date. When you could do it. Um, and then for each one of these, you're going to need to go through and prepare an email specifically for the group. That has all of those details and figure out who that's going to. For each of these. And then I think you need to go ahead and organize, I would organize the last four meetings so that you have that alter, alternative or option. You know, if you can't make this one, we're going to make sure that we hear from everybody. As, you know, as long as that's fair game. And also I think we need to get the, um, the form set up. So the feedback form. So, um, if they're, if for any reason you're unable to come, please circulate this throughout your community.
Okay.
Um, and then we have a specific list of things. You're going to need someone, again, the district is going to need to, you know, lean in, provide some, uh, facility support. Uh, staff will have to help with a few things, but y'all need to be. This needs to be on you to set up. So.
Okay.
Board members, not staff. Yeah.
Gotcha. Okay. I have a question. And I brought this up before. Since there's a script and it's pretty uniform and, and, and we're all saying the same thing. I'm hoping that you also have maybe a, um, responses to frequently asked questions. So that we're all responding to the same things, the same way. I feel like we all, um, whether we have relationships or not, doesn't matter if I'm not in a group that I suggest. Buffalo is one big living room. We're all going to know somebody within a group and have some sort of relationship with someone. And how we respond to people, my, we have to, and I say we, because me especially. I'm going to have to kind of take myself out of that relationship mode with that individual or whatever in order to do the task at hand. So what uniform, you know, we know the questions that are going to come at us. We can all pretty much guarantee what they are. Do you have, since this is something you do across the country, do you have a answers? For like the top four frequently asked questions so that we all can be prepared in a way that's uniform? I, I really feel like we're all going to go on tangents or it's just going to, it's going to create a time suck. If we start responding, um, without having, you know, if the script is timed and it's a certain thing, so should the responses. And we should be uniform in that too. And I get the script part. I get all of us doing that, but that's not going to be the issue. The issue is going to be what we respond to.
So can we? Can we make you all not open doors you shouldn't open? No. If there are things in advance that you think you may be hearing, um, we might be able to give you some pointers on that. Be happy to do that. But I think again, you know, if y'all, you know, the, the intent of the meeting. Is for you to pose some questions, some big, high, you know, high level questions to this community group. And then you want to hear their thinking on it. The biggest thing I think you're going to have is again, the individual issues or, you know, very specific sort of narrow things that actually are current. Current considerations. That's going to be the superintendent and her staff are going to have to put together a way that they want the customer service feedback from these meetings to happen. Cause it's going to happen. So whether that's a website that we incorporate into it on everything or what, I mean, a web, uh, uh, email address, whatever that is. That needs to be understood by all of you. If it is your choice, if all of you want to go into this and, you know, have a consistent. A consistent. consistent data from this, then you need to be consistent in your delivery and what you're doing. And this is not a meeting to do X, Y, or Z other than this. It's going to take a lot of work to set up and it's going to be tempting to get people's opinions on, you know, bus routes or whatever. But it is extremely important that you keep this meeting very narrowly focused on why you are there. And this is big, long-term picture, right? So if anybody needs to talk and they, you know, you don't want to not listen to constituents, but if they need to talk and about, you know, a particular school that's maybe going to close, you know, whatever the thing is that is, you know, on the menu tonight. That needs to be handled in a different way.
So my, my question is not responding to every little thing people say, but you're touching on it without making it specific. And I need you as like the commander right now to make this specific for us is that if we do get questions that are specific to the superintendent, then we all agree to say, we're going to bring this, here's whoever is here, or we're going to, here's a QR code or whatever. It's that type of direction that I want to make sure everybody does. And not just listen and take it all in and then stop it right there. Somebody goes off on a tangent. We're here for this specific purpose. This is why we came here. This, you know, I mean, if we're all on point with that. And we all agree to that. I'm not saying we wouldn't do it. So I don't want anybody getting offended saying, oh, I ain't going to let that happen. No, I'm just saying that if we're doing this, we're going to agree and we're filling out forms and we should agree to follow a bullet point. And if someone goes off tangent, this is what you say. If someone's trying to talk about customer service, here's where you direct. If there's two of us, we can check each other on that.
That would refer back to your accountability partner. Yes, like what it, what are, how are y'all going to signal each other if, if that is the case? But I would, I would consider that.
Scripted as the script. I would like that just as scripted as the script because, you know, our community is synonymous for laying it on us as thick as it can come. And we are here for a purpose. We're not saying we don't want to hear folks. But we don't want to take away from the other folks that are actually there to participate. You see what I'm saying? And I just, you know, if we're going to be this strict on our script and, and how uniform it is, then I'd like to have that uniformed response for us to have.
About the redirection, yeah.
Yes.
Hey Leslie, take you back off of that real quick. I'm, I have a concern about signing authentic to our stakeholders. I know we go by script and we tell them what the purpose is and understanding of why we there and to gather information and not to solve problems, but we lay those, they message to the district. I clearly understand the focus. But we got a parent may come and say, my child got jumped yesterday. And I need some answers. I need something to do. I mean, we can defer them back to the district, but you know, sometimes they look for us for support also. Not only, not only just like support with the district, but like mentally, mental support or like the, it's going to be okay. And we stick it to the script, that type of like authenticity with the board members might go away or, or might be perceived differently.
I think that if a parent is having to come to one of you to handle their, something like that, then, you know, that's a trained behavior maybe. Or, you know, I don't see why a parent would have, would need to come to a board meeting to get something like that dealt with. But if that is the case, again, the, you know, you're not going to sound unempathetic. You need to make sure they understand, we want to make sure that this gets addressed. And here's so-and-so from the staff to make sure that the superintendent understands immediately what's going on, right?
The reason why I say, we get these calls every day. And then when we.
Yeah, but if you are, if you are giving yourself over to being called out, you know, like taken off that all the time. I would suggest, you know, like just be mindful of that. That is a choice. These, again, these meetings need to be focused on this work and your ability to stay, you know, again compassionate, but in the moment and, you know, on task about this work is really important. We do have, again, we have a part of the script is about why you're doing that. Why, you know, don't want to come here and sound robotic, but this is the reason we are. This is why this is important that we, you know, read from a script about this. This is why it's important that we deliver this this way. We want to make sure that every single group that we, you know, we want to hear from is responding to the same thing.
Okay, great.
Is your data, again, your data is going to be really skewed if you choose whoever's leading the conversation, if you choose to go down rabbit holes. So I do think that the, how the district communications team will work with you, need to figure out that component. And if one of you, you know, the implementation team, I don't know how y'all want to do that, but the district is, needs to set up messaging around this, have it, I would say prominently on the website would be very helpful. Once you get, you know, at least those, the four meetings at the end. You know where those are going to be. That's sort of an open, you know, invite for folks. Once you get that set up, maybe that's when you post a flyer about, you know, we're, make sure you're, you know, keep your eye out for a meeting in your, you know, that you can attend. You need to also consider if these are, all need to be in person, you know, worst time of the year for weather, I know. Are there some of these groups that may be more effective to have as a Zoom? That, you know, you're not, not going to hear from people if they participate in a Zoom, so that's an alternative if you want. But again, at the end of this process, this is not me and I don't want, you know, y'all to do something or not do something because of anything I'm saying. You need to do this because you're trying to get down the road in terms of accountability for your students. And if, you know, if you are, get to this point. You know, choose to sort of have these meetings in a, you know, meh. Then that, your data for, you know, how you set your goals is not going to be of the community.
Leslie, how long are these meetings supposed to go? Twenty, twenty-two groups in that first one, if they even get five, five minutes, that's, that's a pretty long meeting.
You're not listening to all these groups as individuals. What you would do if you had a large group like this would be break up and do table talks probably?
So let's talk about the tabletops, what that would look like, Leslie, because would we have each group answer the three or four questions or do you assign questions just to each?
No, everybody, yeah, everybody, yeah, everybody would get everyone, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I have another question. Is, when you're saying that the superintendent and the district side is working on their part of this, is this happening simultaneously? Or are we tackling our piece and then we're working with them? Are they having their stuff, putting their stuff together as well? I'm not, you know, as far as the implementation team is going, I don't know. Because now we seem to be, now we're breaking down into groups. Now we're going to be picking when we go and, and all of that. I just want to make sure that we're not ready to go. And then it's like, okay, now, you know, I, if we're working simultaneously, that gives me a little more ease. And I do want to point out, and I'm sorry to sound like this, but this is, this is everything that I've ever wanted as far as like coming together as a board and all that, but at the same time, this is 950 miles ahead of where we were. So this is, it's, it's tense, right? It's tense how we're going to do it. It's tense how we're going to go about it. And I feel like we're so unique in Buffalo and just looking at some of these groups and how we're supposed to bring them together when I know like four of these groups don't associate with the other four. And there's way more to consider than just who we're just deciding to bring to the table. Like I just, just looking at the groupings, I know there's groups that will not sit at the same table with each other. So it's, you know, there, there's a lot more factors to this. And it's not a matter of fact thing. It's starting to sound like this is like just a matter of fact, let's go out here, let's say what we got to say, let's hear what we got to hear and be out, like. It's bigger than all that. And I'm, that's the tension I'm feeling. I don't know if anybody else is feeling that way, but I had to speak on that.
Well, I'm not feeling like that. I think when we talk about Buffalo, even though it's a small, big town. I strongly believe that most people want the same things that we want, is success for our children. And so it's all about the delivery of, you know, like Leslie said, we're all going to be consistent in the delivery of what the expectations are for these listening tours. And so I really don't care about people not getting along. The bottom line is, these are our children and I believe that they want the best for our children. So yeah, I agree Jen, there's, there's groups that don't get along, but that's not our problem. Our biggest challenge.
I'm with you. I want you to know, I'm with you. That's the attitude I want to bring to the table. And I'm hoping that that's where everybody is, is that we go in, we do what we got to do because ain't nobody ever done nothing like this. We're going to bring these groups together that don't get along. But I needed to put out there that that's a challenge that we need to, and my, actually that would have been my next statement. Is that we got to just go out there and do it, but we have to be prepared for what's coming at us is all I'm saying. And I'm ready, you know, everybody does have to get it together and the silos have to come down. And that's, if we're going to be the ones to do it, that's sweet. It's everything I ever wanted, but I'm just literally putting out the challenges that I know are coming for us. You know what I mean? And, and that's it, so.
Yeah, this is unprecedented work. And, you know, as a board, you know, we should really feel proud of, you know, taking this stance and it's necessary. I think AJ said the other day on the book study session that Buffalo is the first in New York State that's doing this work. And so, you know, people are looking, you know, other districts will be looking. And so sure, it, it, it's kind of eerie, but that's what we do. We're eerie people. And we, we, we do what we got to do.
I think, I think what, what Leslie has addressed some of the things that you're talking about Jen in, in the script. Because I had some concerns too. I know people want to turn this from a gripe session, what Buffalo Public Schools have been done, or my child needs this. But she had a part in the script that really clearly stated, this is not the time for public service, griping, gripe session, this or that. This is about, we are focusing on student outcomes. What do you want your students, your child to learn, see, be able to do and say your vision? We are listening to your vision. The other things that, oh, y'all ain't never hired nobody, diversity in hiring. That's all the superintendent's thing. And hopefully some of her staff will be there to catch, catch all the mess that's, that's feedback for administration. Because Leslie wrote in the script very clearly, if it's a service, customer service issue, we'll give you a sheet of paper to give to so-and-so, to the right person to handle it. And that's the part we'll work with the district. If it, if it's, oh, y'all ain't did that in 20 years, that's a gripe session and I'm sorry, it's not a sorry. We are moving forward to do the best for our kids, gripe sessions, here's a piece of papers. It ain't happening here. This meeting is narrowly focused on moving toward not adult inputs, student outcomes. And we're going to have to keep it on track. And you're right, she got some things written out in that script. Because I have the same kind of questions because I know what, what's out there. But I'm going to be able to say very nicely, we're prepared for it. Here's a piece of paper. Madam Superintendent, I love you and you're going to get a lot of paper.
Well, I apologize if I spoke too soon because I haven't seen the script yet. So if that's within there, that's exactly what I'm looking for. If that's the responses. That's what I'm looking for, that we're uniform and seeing. So, yeah, I just, I had to put my intention out there and I apologize if it seemed long-winded, but.
No, 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 you're fine. You're processing through this. I know it's a lot. And I, I will keep feeding you things. I'm trying not to get in front of y'all and I've talked to you at different times. So I will say that I just sent you all a link to a site that I'd set up that kept sort of the most relevant things I need from you or to you, or the big picture thing set up in one place. It's got the implementation timeline on there and a couple other key pieces that we will refer to frequently. There are also two links on there to the forums. If you have not signed up for a script practice next week, do that. And there was the input as well. Like if there's something critical that you wanted to have in the script, make sure that you put that on there. I will endeavor to have your completed script so that y'all can look at it late Sunday. And again, if you, you know, take this in steps, but do realize y'all have turned into, you know, event planners here. This, these are your meetings. You are going to need to do the outreach. It's not, you know, turn this over to Will and he can get it handled. These are, you know, these are meetings that y'all need to coordinate with each other. You know, like, how are we going to get all these people? Where are we going to have it? The district, hopefully will be providing support in terms of, you know, if there are needs in terms of interpretation. In terms of interpreters, in terms of, you know, accessibility, security, food, you know, y'all need to define that for them, but that would be hopefully a responsibility. AV, Mr. Kadrick will be, hopefully. But I think you're, one of the things, Dr. Williams, do you have an ETA on the data sheet?
I'm working on that now with staff. Lost a week last week. I was all sick unfortunately. But I anticipate that we will have it done by the end of this week.
Okay. And what we're referring to there is again, we've asked that the, and Dr. Williams is working on putting together some, you know, some real data so that y'all can see the reality for students in the district. It's very student outcome focused, understanding about the current reality. So that you can go and ask people, what do you want to see? Here's what's actually, here's the reality right now, right? Here's what's happening with our students in terms of their data and their learning, not what's going on with the district as a whole. Here's what's happening with the students. What's your vision? Like where would you like to go from here? What would you like this to be, right? What values do you need protected as we take this journey? So those big questions, those are big things. So you will have that before you go out. You will be able to look through that and hopefully incorporate that into your knowledge before you, you know, you'll be able to hand that out to people as well, so. This is not, this is the hardest, I will say, one of the hardest parts of the process is right now. It's also one of the most rewarding. So people who have been through this process are like, wow, we've never, you know, listened like that before. It was very positive, so. Hand up.
Well, I just think that it's important that we realize that even though you're representing the, the district or the board, it's not your show. Okay, and so that you should speak less and listen more is what the goal should be. Okay, you don't need to editorialize, you don't need to do anything other than ask the questions and move forward. Don't need to hear no self reflecting, what my experience was and that my schools, none of that stuff. Just keep it, keep it straight, simple, kiss it, keep it simple, okay? Let's make sure because what can happen is, is that you can make one statement. And it can be put in the news that can sabotage the entire effort that we're trying to do. So we want to make sure that we stay on script and that we are, remain in control, but it's not your show. And I think that'll work if we can make that happen. And that's what I think is important. I don't want to get any, you know, argument back and forth with people or disagreement. Just keep the script and let's just make it happen. That's all.
We'll make it work, yeah.
Make it work.
Eye statements, everybody, everybody, eye. Eye statements. Everybody, everybody, I, everybody is going to, this, you're going to make this happen. I know you are. So again, next steps are, um, you know, people taking responsibility for these and then, um, making sure that the, we work with Dr. Williams, have a point person for who's going to be coordinating with them, get a website. I mean, I'm sorry, I keep saying that. Get a, um, what, how do you want to receive? You know, is there a specific email that you're going to set up to have feedback from these? For anybody that's coming with, you know, outside the realm of what we want to hear, but it's important, but we're going to get it heard this way. So if that's a specific email address that comes to where, um, get that set up. And then let's, you know, like, how are you going to, how are you going to, how are you going to, uh, socialize this? How you?
Leslie, as you go right there, um, I know, I know some organizations that do, does their, their meetings live stream. And is there any different practices you recommend for that? Because I know some we go to have a live stream camera set up with some of their, um, meeting members that would be like we are today on a Zoom.
Um, I don't know. I mean, just looking at the way this list has come together, I think y'all are going to be hosting them all. If you do a Zoom, you know, you could certainly open that. I would recommend if you do have, you know, if you do end up having a Zoom meeting that you have, that you have, um, you know, a requirement that people need to be on, um, on camera or, you know, just, you don't want a bunch of, um, you know, dark, you know, people who are, who are not interested in being there for a communication. Yeah. Yeah. People need to be willing to communicate with you. That's the point of this.
Face to face, transparent. Leslie, could you share?
Who truly may have a problem with that, but that's going to be like Cindy right now.
That's a rule.
Yeah.
Show your face. So Leslie, can you share with the, the board as you did with the implementation committee, the timeline for this?
I will, yes. The overall bucket of time, um, if y'all check your email, the implementation timeline is on that website. And I've kind of, you know, sketched out on that, what that would be. Ideally, what I would love for you to do is back into getting, um, Dr. Williams, your goals and guardrails as soon as you can, so that she can work towards those for her next year. I mean, we're already, you know, we're getting late in the game. But I would say, you know, you need to put the work into the process now so that the process can be done and you feel okay about it. And, you know, then again, we get, we have to get, hang on a minute, let me go. All right. I'm going to share a screen again and it's, okay. So this is a site that I just sent y'all. The implementation timeline is here. I'll pull that up. And I know it's teeny tiny and it's hard to see, but, um, the, we're right here in this community listening process, assemble list, sort and sign up and schedule meetings. And I have, uh, sort of us being done about now with that process. Um, I think we're going to add a little bit, maybe a week on to that or so. Then we're going to have the, um, listening sessions themselves are here. Ideally, if y'all could finish, you know, schedule and have host listening sessions. And you can run two or three of these the same day because y'all aren't going to all be at one, right? It's, I know it's going to, it's going to get very busy for y'all. But if you could have those done by the end of March, that would be great. Then superintendent is going to go back and, um, y'all are going to, we're going to have to a couple of weeks to analyze the data. So that's going to be something, a function that AJ does. He is very good at that. So what you're hearing back will give you a, okay, these are the major themes of it. We'll show you all the data, but these are the things that kind of rose to the top so that you can understand with the information Dr. Williams is giving you, how you want to build goals around that. The goal and guardrail process right now, we have you drafting your goals and guardrails maybe around, um, by the middle of May. So. Then you need to, if you, you know, you need to put them back out to the public, say, did we hear you? Is this good? And then provisionally adopt them by June. Superintendent then will have, um, a bit, and she's going to, you know, hopefully be developing some interims in the meantime. But she'll have to react to what you set up in terms of the goals and guardrails with her interim proposals. These are the ways that we're going to measure the, um, metrics in the meantime. So you're not just going to hear back, you know, once a year about the overall goal. She's going to be measuring interims along the way. So I have, um, on this schedule, which again, I think is kind of ambitious right now. I have the final adoption of the goals and guardrails, if you accept her interims on the first go, um, by the middle of July. And I would err on the side of giving her as much time as possible, which means y'all working very hard for the next few weeks. And I know, um, I just know there's a lot, lot, lot going on. So. Yeah. Yep. All right. Any more? I know y'all are, I'm running you over. We can, we have regular meetings that are on the calendar. I would recommend at this point, if there's something that's really sitting sideways with you or whatnot, that you reach out to me personally and we have a, you know, a one-on-one to work through that or get with one of your, um, your colleagues. But, um, the list is the implementation committee chair Cindy will, um, coordinate y'all getting signed up for those slots. Yes. I'm giving you that and you're not shaking your head no. So. Okay. Um, this does need to be a process that y'all work together as colleagues to manage. Okay? I am scaffold, not the, not the tools. So. Any heartache? All right. Hearing none. I have a whiny dog. So I will, um, thank you all for the time you've extended this process to myself personally. And I look forward to seeing several of you tomorrow night. So thank you.
Okay. See you tomorrow.
Take care, everybody.
Thank you so much.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, Leslie.
This concludes the committee meeting. Thank you.